At this time, we will call April 21st, 2023 meeting of the Wilson County Planning Commission in order. Anyone wishing to give testimony before this board today, if you would, please stand and raise your right hand. I hereby affirm the testimony I give today to be the whole truth. Say I do.
I do, so have a go.
Thank you. We need to approve the minutes from the March 17th meeting.
Motion to approve.
We have a motion to approve. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion by Ms. Weathers and a second by Mr. Woods to approve. All those in favor vote aye.
Aye.
And those opposed, motion carries. Tom, I guess we'll go straight to old business.
Yes, I have a rezoning request. Application has been made by Mike Rye of Los Design on behalf of the developer, Deleuze Auto Auction Group LLC, with permission from the property owner, Truist Bank, requesting to have property rezoned from A1 Agricultural to C2 PUD General Commercial Plan Unit Development. The property is located on McCurry Road and contains approximately 89.61 acres. The property is further referenced as Wilson County Property Map 137, parcel 35.01. The Wilson County Land Use Plan, or do you want me, before I read through these comments, you've heard them at least one other time because the applicant requested deferral until the April meeting, so it was an extended period of time. They, as I understand it, wished to request some sort of deferral once more because they're still trying to work on outside circumstances with regard to the condition of McCurry Road and the bridge that's on McCurry Road, as well as some of the drainage issues and stuff that go on in that area, potentially being a part of their proposal.
Okay. Let's just hear what they got to say and we'll make a decision.
And if you want to hear my comments, I can proceed with them.
Thank you. Yes, sir.
Thank you, Commissioners. Evan Nami is here on behalf of Deleuze Auto Auction Group, and we do want to move our facility to Wilson County, and that's why we have asked for this plan unit development, which would hold us to only what we say. As you know, or on the map there, you can see that McCurry Road in its intersection with Couchville Pike floods, holds water that sits for, I was just talking to Mr. Davis who lives right around the corner, it stays there. We've had great conversations with the roadway superintendent, our engineer is Mike Los, other engineers, and we think we have a solution. It's a significant investment in Wilson County, and we need to make sure that we know all the numbers. But to do that, we need a little more time, and I'm asking if we can come back to you at your June hearing, and by June hearing, I believe that we will have enough information to tell you that we have a great solution for this intersection. And each time I come here, it's another opportunity for me to meet with, you know, Commissioner Evans and the neighbors and keep you informed of our efforts to really be, you know, the next great Wilson County neighbors. So I'm asking if we can meet, come back to you and report in June.
The, I will tell you, they requested initial deferral in January of 2023 until April. This is far beyond what you've typically done to grant that. I would ask that re-advertising costs be pointed towards them, so we will need some additional fees paid, and that's actually per resolution. Yeah, thank you. Per resolution that was passed by the county commission, 21-4-21, they're responsible for any additional fees. The other option they would have is to simply withdraw and then repay the rezoning and land use plan amendment fees at that time and repost, you know.
And if I may, it's $600 to file the application. It's $150 to republish notice. We're happy to pay that $150. I would rather the concerned citizens who know about the project and our efforts to proceed under the application number they know, rather than kick the can and start over, we're happy to pay that $150 appetite fee. And again, we want our neighbors to give us their input. We want this to be a win for everybody. So I'm asking until mid-June, and I hope to have great news for you then.
June 16th, okay. Okay, I would ask first a motion from the board in reference to his request. We have a motion to defer to the June 16th meeting from Mr. Ash, second by Mr. Jewell. All those in favor vote aye. All those opposed, motion carries, and you will cover the re-advertising costs, correct, sir?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
And if you come back with a way to get the water out of that intersection down there.
I was going to ask you, but I hope that part of your surprise, you know.
You know, yes, but we do think we have a really good solution. It's just got to figure out all the areas. The bridge is in the south end, we're looking at the north end, and we think it's a great stuff, but we'll keep y'all posted and I'll keep working with, you know, the other stakeholders. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
The next item on the agenda is the Montgomery Estates Preliminary Platte consisting of 10 lots on Cairo Bend Road. That applicant has formally withdrawn their platte from consideration, so that proposal is no more. So that's just for your information, you don't have to take action on that.
Okay.
The next item under old business is the resolution amending lot size and allowable land use criterion within the agricultural and residential zone districts should be attached to the agenda.
I'm going to make a motion to move that to the end of the agenda, please.
Okay.
We have a motion, a second, to move that to the end of the agenda. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
And those opposed, motion carries. I guess we're ready for new business now.
Okay, give me just a moment. Under new business, I have a rezoning of property request. Application has been submitted by Joe Haddix on behalf of property owner Susan Gibson, requesting to have property rezoned from A1 agricultural to R1 rural residential. The property is located at 724 Bradshaw Road and contains approximately 17.78 acres. Property is further referenced as Wilson County Property Map 26, parcel 67.01. It's in District 5, Commissioner Jeremy McFarland's district. The county land use plan calls for low-density residential development in this general area. The R1 rural residential district fits that description. The difference in number of lots realized on this property, if other lot width and bulk requirements can be met, is a consideration when evaluating the difference in current A1 zoning and what is being proposed within the R1 rural residential zone district. The current A1 zoning, by estimate, could allow as many as 14 lots and stipulating that public sewer is available. And at present, the existing R1, or the proposed R1 rural residential district would allow as many as 23 single-family units by calculation notwithstanding site-specific limitations. There are site-specific limitations inclusive of, but not limited to regulatory floodplain, a limited capacity of available soils to service any development, et cetera, that might affect these densities if or when development occurs on the property regardless of zoning classification. Staff will note the development does have road frontage on Bradshaw Road. Wilson County Road Commission and the County Regional Planning Commission will require some road improvements to Bradshaw Road at the time of any actual subdivision development, regardless of what traffic study findings are, and regardless of whether a major subdivision on this property is zoned. Staff has made this rezoning request available to executive representatives of the school system. Staff has had no feedback from the schools or other representatives regarding this request, though there was some concern mentioned by a school board member about a various higher density residential proposal that was previously submitted for a property not terribly far from here. Staff has also made copies of the rezoning request available to emergency services and has been given no feedback. The proposed rezoning is within Wema Station 6, Highway 109 North's five-mile ISO response zone for fire and emergency services. The county stormwater department has requested that the applicant and planning commission and other interested parties notified, be notified that the presence of sinkholes, caves, wetlands, streams, and land areas that are extremely flat or marshy or steep could affect the development of this tract and the total number of lots realized. As an additional point of information, the rezoning does appear to be near the Wright Jennings Century Farm located at 231 Northwest Williams and the Bates Century Farm located at 308 and 325 Academy Road, based on information provided to the county planning office. With the above statements made, staff can recommend approval of the request for rezoning to R1 rural residential zoning. However, I do believe there's a commissioner here that may want to bring to your attention a study, and this is going to be, the county has recently contracted with the Corps of Engineers to do a Spencer Creek specific watershed and drainage impact study for, that's going to take into account the existing situation as well as projected future development, and then get back to us with some recommendations and possible standards that we may want to look at implementing in the Spencer Creek subdivision. If that is a successful project, we may go from the Spencer Creek watershed to an additional sub watershed and another and another. I believe this may fall just in the edge of the Spencer Creek watershed, so that's why I brought it up.
Yes, sir, Mr. McFarland.
Thank you very much, Jeremy McFarland, Commissioner, District 5. Tom, I think you provided a copy of the contract?
I provided a copy of the contract that has a color copy, approximately three pages back.
I'll take just a minute, Mr. Chairman.
I think there's a bigger one, one page back, bigger copy.
I'm sorry?
I think there's a bigger copy, one page back from where you're at. I may be wrong.
Okay, we're good.
Okay.
Oh, the county has, we've been having anomalies, James, in your area of mine of flooding, weather anomalies, et cetera, and so we have, and I think I was probably the one pushing this in the county commission to get the funds to get a study done with the Corps of Engineers, hydraulic study. So if we got two inches of rain in 12 hours, if we went out here and we got it in two hours, it's going to be over our heads, and we've seen this in the Gardo area. So there's a map in your contract that Tom has provided for you this morning that shows that area, and the Corps, I talked to them last night, and they called me again this morning at 7:30. They're building a baseline, we're just starting this project, it's a year and five, two or three months long, and they're building a baseline on where we are in the here and now. And hopefully, we won't allow a lot of development in there, huge developments that would skew that baseline, because hopefully, in a year from now, shortly thereafter, we'll be able to predict flooding if you have so much rain and look at National Weather Services data and know where lots are critical not to build and where they're not so critical. But at any rate, that contract is there for you, but this particular area does fall within. I don't think it's of a major impact on it. It's not like having gigantic roofs and 150 houses built, it's smaller than that, but I do want to call one thing to your attention up here on this map. There is a creek that runs through the property on this subdivision. Over here off the property, there's a swamp, and that swamp feeds into a creek that runs through the people property there, and it starts a blue line stream right in this area here, and this is a drainage that comes off of that, so it can aggravate the flooding, and it has been flooding up to the back of these houses in years past because I've been there and seen them, but you do have a drainage right here. So I just ask that the commission take that into consideration as they make their deliberation and decision today on whether to prove this or not to prove it, and I thank you, sir.
Thank you, sir. We have anyone else here today wishing to speak on this case? Yes, ma'am, please come forward and state your name for the record.
My name is Fetty Johnstone, and I live at 722 Heritage Road, which is right, backs the right up to that drainage ditch that he was talking about, and I have pictures. This is what's happening to my yard already with the runoff. I'd hate to see this developed with more homes put out there because I think it's going to make this situation worse. I already have water comes in, it has nowhere to go. I have a sump pump underneath my house that runs nonstop, so we already have some water issues, an aquifer or something underneath all of this neighborhood that causes a lot of drainage and water issues, and I just wanted to voice my opinion that I really would hate to see this developed, and I'm afraid it's just going to make the situation, I'm sorry, that I already have with my property drainage even worse, so I just wanted to bring that to your attention.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Do we have anyone else wishing to speak on this case today? Yes, ma'am.
I live in the neighborhood as well. My house backs up to this proposed property here, and I'm at 519 Leanaway, and I will just attest to the lady that just spoke up, all of the properties that are along that have, we've seen flooding. I've lived here for, lived in the neighborhood for almost 18 years now, and we see a lot of runoff and a lot of flooding on the backside of those homes, and just I know that all the neighbors are concerned that the problem's going to be worse if it's developed and so.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else wishes, yes, sir, please. Good morning, sir.
My name is Jack Wallace. I live at 712 Heritage Road, and my property somewhat backs up to this de-planning right here. I bought the house new, and Mr. Eastland, Bobby Eastland, told me that particular little drain that runs behind our home that connects over to Bradshaw Road was a natural drain, was been a natural drain for many, many years, and I've seen actual blueprints of our neighborhood being in pipe, buried pipe. It never did get developed that way, and our particular property stops the somewhat drain that they created. At my property's edge, all this drainage water that's been concerned gets backed up at our property because the development stopped, and it's backing up all the way up to everyone's else's property that's around me, the neighborhood. And this particular property that we're talking about being developed right here, it's kind of sits upon a hill, and we're concerned all the water's going to come off of that even more so once they start some type of a development. Like I say, I did see the blueprint where all this should have been put in pipe and the drainage issue handled correctly. It did not happen. I don't know if Mr. McFarland's aware of that or not, but yes, that's, won't be a concern if any more water comes down on us, and we are having our properties flooded because of the drain system and the swamp area around us. Won't that be known?
Yes, sir, thank you.
Yes.
Anyone else wishing to speak on this case today?
May I ask a question?
Yes, sir.
This may be for the county attorney. I don't know where we are in the county, and that's really not pushed so hard to get this flood study off and running, but where are we as a county commission, as a county planning commission? If we approve a lot or property and it floods or floods somebody else after our approval, do we have a liability with that? Does the county have liability?
I don't think so.
Okay.
I think we have immunity to the decisions that we make as long as we don't commit gross negligence.
Okay. Thanks, sir.
Gross negligence, give me an example of what you're saying. Like on a vote on this, what would be considered gross, how would we have to vote to make the?
Think about this now, y'all considering with 10 to 30 cases a month, and just about every case you hear, somebody will raise issue with water.
Yes.
Now, that's not to say it's not legitimate, but if we've got exposure on all of them, we might as well shut down. We don't have exposure carrying out a governmental responsibility. Now, if we, and I'm sorry, I can't think of the good words, but that's the reason that it has to be gross negligence, it has to be something.
I would also, I would also point out.
On the limit.
Yeah. I would also point out two things. Unlike when the back of Heritage Valley or Heritage Highlands was built, we have engineering and design standards for comprehensive drainage plans in place that were not here likely prior to 2006. So we do have design standards that do go into play, come into play when we're talking about an actual subdivision development. This is not the subdivision development, this is the rezoning.
And before anything can actually happen here, whether it's rezoned or not, Tom, you would have to go through that complete evaluation through James's department and be engineered and approved before anything could actually happen.
We've got the flood standards that they have to make, drainage standards, detention standards, infiltration standards, a lot of different standards that we did not have in place at the time of Heritage Highlands, James, and I'd just speak on that.
The other thing I'll bring up about my comments is we have to consider it based on the criterion we have in place now. I do think Mr. McFarland brings up a legitimate issue about the ongoing drainage study that's now been contracted with the county for the Spencer Creek watershed. This body does not necessarily have the power to affect a moratorium in any part of the county in and of their own volition. I think that would have to go to the county commission. However, if you wish to consider that drainage study and the impact to that drainage study of any proposed development, you're certainly welcome to do that on a site-by-site basis, and you've got several on this agenda that would be affected by the Spencer Creek watershed study.
And the timetable for that is somewhere a year plus, correct?
Yeah, I believe first quarter of 2025 is the final, is what the projected final is by the court.
Thank you.
And I can cover that, you can take that into consideration on a case-by-case basis, but when we get sued from a decision we made, and if the allegation is always that the action we took is arbitrary and capricious, what that means is we didn't follow our own standards. So to go back to Mr. McFarland's question, if we follow our standards, whether we make the decision, it's agreeable or not, to follow those standards, the court is supposed to uphold that. The court is not supposed to support, substitute its judgment for that of the planning commission. Now, if we don't follow our standards or whatever, we get sued not for money, but they sue to overturn our decision and either send it back or determine to do the opposite way. So I don't know.
Mr. County Attorney.
Something is that I can remember to consider. There may have been one or two, but I don't think so.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Haddix.
Good morning, Joe Haddix, CSDG. Appreciate everybody's time this morning. So before you, as Tom mentioned, a rezoning request, really just a continuation of the existing Heritage Highland subdivision, be the same developer and builder, Mr. Bobby Eastland onboard, continue building through these lots. I think y'all hear me say just about every month, you know, we appreciate the adjacent neighbors, you know, we see stuff on paper that we think we can try to help fix, drainage concerns, you know, certainly flooding, road improvements, but when we hear the community come out and voice those, you know, it points us in the right direction on where to look, you know, so we certainly think we can help the situation with the development. James mentioned, you know, the regulations in place right now are vastly improved over what was in place when the original subdivision was constructed, so we will meet or exceed those as always, and appreciate your consideration of this project and look forward to bringing back some solutions to you with the sketch plat and preliminary plats.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Do we have anyone else wishing to speak on this case today? We'll close the public comment section at this time. Yes, sir, Mr. Burchard.
One other piece of information, since we do have the zoning density amendment kind of in play, it's on the agenda, any decision you make on that amendment still has to go to the county commission before it takes effect. This rezoning request, since it's kind of in a, in league timeline, this rezoning request does not entitle them to the additional density that they would currently get by this R1 zoning. They would have to have submitted a platte for your approval, and there's a question about whether or not the submittal is enough or whether or not they've got to have the actual approval from the planning commission, and I'll let Mike speak on that for that, for any sketch or preliminary platte, to have an entitlement to the densities that we've outlined in our rezoning recommendations. So they may very well, hypothetically, if the current amendment passed, they may rezon this to effectively land, if the county commission and you chose to do so, they could get this rezoning effectively land at the same density allowance as what A1 currently allows.
But I don't think that's anything we need to consider right this minute.
No, I mean, you've got to make your decision based upon our standards.
Right. I'm just, I'm just letting you know.
Okay, all right, thank you. All right, do we have any questions from our board? Do we have a motion?
You had a recommendation on this, Tom, repeat it again for us.
As I said, with the above statements made, staff can recommend approval of the request for rezoning to R1 rural residential. This subdivision is R1 zoned. I believe it's R1 zoned here and possibly to here. This is A1, so this is all R1, this is A1, and this is A1 right now.
Do we have a motion from our board?
I move we approve.
We have a motion for Mr. Thompson to approve, I'm sorry.
Subject to staff recommendations.
We have a motion for Mr. Thompson to approve, subject to staff recommendations, a second by Mr. Jewell. All those in favor, please raise your right hand. One, two, three, four. We have four yeses. All those against, please raise your right hand. We have four, four, and four against.
So that is not a positive recommendation.
It will be sent to the county commission then with a.
Can somebody not vote? There's nine of you.
So five against.
Five, five against.
You can't count.
I probably skipped myself. That's okay.
Five, no. You've got to have six on one side or the other.
We don't have six, either one way or the other. It will be sent to the county commission with a negative recommendation, is that correct, Tom?
With no recommendation.
Or with no recommendation, I'm sorry. All right.
Do we defer it? Try to get a better vote next month?
That's entirely up to you.
I hate to send things up there, not one way or the other, that's just what I'm saying. It would be a session, I don't know whether people will change their minds. How many, Mr. Chairman, do we have not here?
Two.
Two members not here.
You have to have six yeses or six no's. The difference is not here, is what I'm trying to say.
I agree, and I would open the table for another motion if you were so inclined to make one.
I move we defer it to the next meeting. Second.
We have a motion for Mr. Jewell, a second by Ms. Weathers, to defer to the June 16th meeting. All those in favor, vote aye.
Aye.
And those opposed? We will defer it to the June 16th meeting?
Was that all aye?
I'm sorry.
May.
Was that all aye?
Yes.
It was, yes, sir.
Okay. Yeah, when would, just for the public's benefit, when is that meeting?
May 19.
Friday, May 19.
Yes, sir.
Same time.
We're now ready for site plans and plats, Tom?
Yes, the first item on the agenda under site plans and plats is a site plan for Golden Bear located at Central Pike, consisting of one lot at the corner of Central Pike and Murfreesboro Road. It's map 123, parcel 20.02. The plat needs include building elevations, shown to ensure that they meet our building materials requirements. They do have two road frontages, so they'll have at least two sides of this building that would have to be brickstone or some other material that you typically would deem acceptable, as well as 25% down the sides that are not fronting on the road in a commercial The proposed gravel lot needs to be addressed. They, typically, we require these to be dusted, surfaces paved, and with that, we can recommend approval subject to the agreement of the required documents. I don't know if there's anybody here representing this one.
Do we have anyone here wishing to speak on this case today? Okay, but your recommendation is?
We can recommend it subject to them complying with these two deficiencies, or you can recommend deferral until they can come and speak to it.
Do we have any questions from our board?
It's a procedure that we've always had, though, if you, if a recommendation's subject to staff recommendations, that's what that means.
Yes, and if they, and if they disagree for some reason, we'll put them back on the agenda.
Okay. Do we have a motion?
I make a motion to approve on staff recommendations.
We have a motion for Mr. Ricketts to approve, subject to staff recommendations. Do we have a second?
A second.
A second from Mr. Woods. All those in favor, vote aye.
Aye.
And those opposed, motion carries. Now, ready for the site plan for the American Tower, T-Mobile?
Yes, this is a site plan for T-Mobile Tower. I believe this is a co-location, is that correct, staff? Yeah, it's 14701 Canesville Road with minor technical corrections. Staff can recommend approval. Basically, this is where they're adding another dish and some equipment at the pad.
Okay. Do we have anyone here wishing to speak on this case today? Do we have any questions? Do we have any questions from our board?
Tom, is that down on the lower end of Caneville Road?
I'm going to have to defer to my staff who did the field review on this particular one.
What do you mean by the lower end? I mean, it's closer.
I mean, it's near the Florida Creek Bridge.
Yes, just north of it.
Any other questions from our board? Do we have a motion?
So moves, staff recommendation.
I have a motion to approve subject to staff recommendations with a second from Mr. Ash. All those in favor, vote aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries. Ready for the site plan for the Gilmore Hill Baptist Church Pavilion?
Yes, with minor technical corrections, staff can recommend approval of this. This is for a church pavilion roughly in this vicinity, on the lot which is in the, kind of in the northeast corner of the property.
Okay.
I've been told to be descriptive for the recording, so.
Do we have anyone here wishing to speak on this case today? Yes, please come forward.
My name is Craig Watson. I work for Gardner Construction. We're doing this for Ivan Rivas, who owns the church. Ivan Rivas and Adam Gardner have a great relationship. They've done work together in the past, and this is just right before the summer, getting them a little pavilion so they can, they can throw events and stuff under cover.
This is at the corner of Gilmore Hill Road and South Dickerson Chapel Road.
Okay, thank you. Do we have anyone else wishing to speak on this case today? Ms. Bowman?
Hi, Beth Bowman, 2055 Bullets Ferry Road, District 6 Commissioner. No one has expressed any concerns or voiced any complaints in regards to this case, and I would say it is certainly an added benefit, and will request your approval for this project.
Thank you. Do we have anyone else wishing to speak on this case today? Do we have any questions from our board? Do we have a motion? A motion to approve, Mr. Ash, second by Ms. Weathers. All those in favor, vote aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries. Ready for the finals at Ravenscrest Phase 2, Section 3?
Mr. Chairman, this is a final plat of Ravenscrest subdivision Phase 2, Section 3, consisting of 32 lots to be developed down to Jackson Road, if I understand correctly, and as well as connecting into the current Ravenscrest Avenue, as it's coming out of the new subdivision that's being developed there. The plat meets planning requirements and staff can recommend approval.
Okay.
Just as a side, I'm told that this, the overall Ravenscrest subdivision is roughly, is between 500 and 600 lots proposed. However, I'm told that at present, this 32 lots, or maybe a very few lots after that, may be about as much as they've got soils approval for so far. So, they're actively seeking additional soils and additional means of trying to provide the, I guess, sewer provision for the remainder of the development.
Okay, thank you.
With the water and wastewater authority, they may wish to speak to that, but that doesn't affect this 32 lots.
Do we have anyone here wishing to speak on this case today?
Good morning. Kyle Griffin, CSTG. As Tom said, this is the last piece that connects Clayville Road to Jackson Road, and currently there are no additional soils available for the parcels that are beyond Section 2, Section 1, 2, and 3, but they are exploring the rest of the site.
Do you know how, what the total is for what this 32 lots will make that's going to be out there on the ground?
I don't have the total. It's in 120-ish.
128.
Yeah, it's in the 120s. Yeah, this is just the next 32 lots. We respectfully request your support and be happy to answer any questions. Thank you.
So, you got about four fifths of it kind of outstanding.
I understand, I understand. So, they're, based on what you're telling, saying, Tom, they're going to have to add properties to get more soils?
Or they're going to have to seek some, seek some solution or resolution through the Water and Wastewater Authority, which is the sewer provider.
Okay, all right. Do we have anyone else wishing to speak on this case today? Do we have any questions from our board? Do we have a motion?
So be.
We have a motion to approve from Mr. Woods, subject to staff recommendations. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second from Mr. Ricketts. All those in favor, vote aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries. The final for the Hawthorne Valley, Phase 2?
This is the back half of the Hawthorne Valley subdivision property that was initially a part of the Hawthorne Valley subdivision itself. The applicant has addressed the center turn lane requirement that you put on them at the preliminary plat, I believe, with the state of Tennessee, and Onstir's Ferry Pike, which is just off the screen, at the front of the existing neighborhood. They need to submit their required amenity package to us for approval, along with the road and drainage plans. Let me back up. Have you gotten road and drainage plans on a check, James?
Yeah, Jerry's looking.
Jerry's reviewing those right now. The plat meets all other requirements and staff can recommend approval.
Thank you. Do we have anyone here wishing to speak on this case today?
My name is David Weber. I live at the entrance of Hawthorne Valley. I just noticed, the five years that I've lived there, the volume of traffic on Central Pike and coming into our subdivision is more of a, almost a roller coaster hill coming down into our subdivision. We have two cul-de-sacs on each side, 100 yards from our entrance. We have kids, I have kids. My mailbox has been run over once, my fence has been hit. When we have freeze, nobody can get up that hill, it's never maintained, so I'm always the one out there throwing salt or sand to get my neighbors out of the community. I feel that the sheer volume of houses going through our neighborhood right now, between the FedEx trucks, the Amazon, everything else that's going through there, the quality of houses that they're going to build, you know, we have beautiful houses that we take care of, and it just seems like that this is, there's got to be a different way. The sheer volume of people coming in, the kids that play on our streets, I just feel that it's, you're going to ruin our property values, you're going to ruin, you know, possibly the safety of our children. That's all I have to say.
Thank you, sir.
Mr. Chairman, I do need to correct something I stated. It's actually the turn lane improvements on Central Pike, not Sturridge Ferry Pike. That was, that was a...
That's correct. Mr. Griffin, have you?
That was a typo.
Kyle Griffin, CSTG, representing LGI Homes. We're real excited about this development. There's no question that the existing homes are very, very nice as such. We have committed to having no vinyl on our homes. We are 75% brick and stone on the fronts, no vinyl siding on any of the other exteriors to be hardy.
You're a little soft spoken. Can you reiterate that?
Sorry about that.
That's all right.
The homes that we're proposing, we are committing to 75% brick and stone on the fronts. The only vinyl that'd be there would be in softits and windows trim, very small items. The entire exterior would be hardy, brick and stone, no exposed foundations that are not brick and stone as well, so we are, we are upping our standards as well on this site. And Tom, you are correct, the turn lanes are on Central Pike, and those are now approved at T-Deck, uh, T-Dot, sorry.
And the, you can hold them to the commitment on, on the Central Pike. He's made these other commitments on the public record. We don't have such a requirement for those building material standards, but he has made those requirements, those commitments on the record, and I have no reason to believe that they won't uphold that.
Can you tell me the, where's this, where we're going from for this?
This is going to Pine Creek.
Okay.
You asked them to, and they could not find one, and then when they came back...
We have purchased sewer credits.
Yes, but that's when the whole issue about improving Central Pike came up.
No, they're not on our site, they're on different sites. We have purchased other people's credits.
Okay.
Hunter Creek, right?
There's, there's multiple locations that we're drawing from. I don't, I don't have the exact, I think one of the landmark homes projects...
It's down off of Lone Oak Road, and the Water Authority may be here, can speak a little bit more directly to the specifics. I don't know if Chris is here or not.
Chris, would you mind telling us how that works, please?
Sure.
Thank you, Mr. Griffin. Thank you.
Mr. Ricketts has a question, I believe, when you get a moment.
Yes, sir, Mr. Ricketts.
I have a question for him. This has been before us before.
Yes, multiple times.
And you were supposed to do research to see if you could get an exit out on the road. Did you ever check into that? Where all of it wouldn't be coming towards Central Pike?
Yes, we have explored that. We were not able to obtain right-of-way or easement to the southwest. We are providing additional stubs to the east and the west to other properties that are not developing at this time. So, there are future connections, just nothing that connects to a road today.
And you may recall that when they talked about this at length, the last times they've been before us, that's where the discussion became, was there enough right-of-way on the state ride, state road right-of-way to make, I guess, updated improvements over and above what would have been required when the initial phase of Hawthorne Valley was done, and it turns out there was, and they were able to get approval for some turn lane improvements up off of Central Pike that should benefit both the existing neighborhood as well as the, the proposed development.
And y'all, have y'all reviewed those, Tom?
Well, they're, it's a state route, so it's ultimately T-Dots.
They get to make that?
Yeah, yeah.
The Road Commission has reviewed and approved.
They what?
And T-Dot has approved.
And we do have copies.
Okay, all right, thank you.
And you might want to get, I didn't mean to interrupt Chris, the train of thought, because, so you were asking about, just to backtrack a little bit, you were asking about where the added sewer credits that they're purchasing would be coming from specifically in terms of being able to dispose of residual treated gray water?
Sure. Yeah, I can, Chris Luber, Water and Wastewater Authority, Wilson County. The, we have, actually have a trunk main goes right through that area, a forced main and return line, so the effluent will go to the low-groad treatment facility or membrane facility, will be treated there, comes back to return lines, and then they have soil credits they have over on Lone Oak Road, where we have approved soils from T-Deck, and T-Deck's approved all the construction plans for this subdivision, so we got all the approvals necessary, so we're ready to go.
Thank you, sir.
Yep.
Do we have anyone else wishing to speak on this case today? Yes, sir.
My name is Black Bowles. I live in Hawthorne Valley. My biggest objection is there's one entrance, one exit. Stocking 80 new houses, probably 200 cars, maybe more, every day. One entrance, one exit, 200 cars on the Central Pike. Does Central Pike need that much more traffic? We don't need that much more traffic going in and out of our neighborhood with one way in and out. Yeah, there's future plans for more entrances and exits, but when is that going to happen? Five years, 10 years, 20 years?
We can't answer that.
Yeah, you can't answer that. But I don't think at this time, we need a couple hundred more trips in and out of the subdivision. That's my biggest concern. Lot of young kids, so, you know, it's also a safety issue. Emergency services, can they service that many more houses in a timely manner? So, if there was ever, you know, some sort of evacuation, you got one entrance, one exit. That's my concerns, so that's all I have to say.
Thank you, sir.
Yep, thanks.
Do we have anyone else wishing to speak on this case today? Yes, sir.
Corey Jones. I live in the neighborhood, and your proposed turning lane is going to push into the neighborhood, and it already slopes way down, so there's going to be a safety issue of trying to get in and out of the neighborhood because you're pushing further down, so the cars are sitting at more of an angle, and you won't be able to see the road as good, and I think that's the main concern of getting in and out of the neighborhood, and not to mention when you've got a line of cars trying to go out of there. I mean, one entrance is, if they can get a entrance down the road, then what's stopping them from getting right-of-way? What's the hang-up?
I can't answer that question, sir.
I mean...
They have, they have the, they have the parcel that they, that they purchased, they do not have ownership of any additional parcels that have road frontage. I will point out that the initial Hawthorne Valley subdivision plat, preliminary plats called for one entrance, inclusive of this property being developed.
With larger lots. Yeah, it don't make sense to me either, you know, we have an HOA in there.
There shouldn't be...
So, they're going to add on all these small and a lot more homes, that's going to be different style, but yet they got to come through our neighborhood to get to that.
I'm not going to defend the developments, or the developers' proposal to cluster the, the subdivision, and, but they have that right, and I think they did do it in response to some desire to keep some of the green space and pond area and things like that. I will point that out for use and benefit by everybody in this, both these neighborhoods. But I will point out that the larger lots, whether or not they're large lots or small lots, they should be getting a roughly equivalent number of lots.
On the same amount of acreage?
Right.
Okay. The other issue is you're going to have a lot of big equipment rolling through that neighborhood. I mean, they need to come up with a different way to get in and out than having all that. I mean, I do land clearing for a living, and the amount of, the size of the equipment that we bring in and out is just going to tear up the roads, and you've got that steep hill coming down in there, got kids running around, it's a big safety issue. I think they should have to come up with a, a different entrance to get in to do what they're going to do. I mean, eventually they're going to build, but they need to come in a different way.
I don't know that we have the ability to make them come in a different way, and apparently they have no landing holdings that would allow them to do that at this time. I don't know that we have the ability to demand that.
We could, we could require the stub outs we've got. In fact, there is one required stub out at least to the Heart Creator property, which was in return for him, which is to the south, which was in return for him abandoning, abandoning an access easement he had all the way back to Central Pike in return for the roads that are currently built, being allowed to go across it. And the condition was that they would be afforded a public road connection.
Okay, thank you. Anything else, sir?
Just that it's a big safety issue, bringing that heavy equipment through that one entrance. You've got the big hill, so, I mean, there's a issue of trying to get in and out on a hill with no visibility if you push that lane further over. So, I think that's going to be the biggest, biggest compromise.
Thank you. Do we have anyone else wishing to speak on this case?
Good morning. I'm Jeff Reed. I'm here with LGI Homes. Obviously, LGI would have liked to have had a second entrance to this site, but we were never able to acquire one. If you remember, when we were here for the preliminary plat, one of the neighbors came and actually vehemently opposed having, providing access to LGI. When Hawthorne Valley as a subdivision was initially approved, it was approved with one entrance. This is the second section of that entrance, so this is the same as what was originally conceived when Hawthorne Valley, Section 1, was done. You know, when this came back before you guys for the preliminary plat, there was a lot of discussion on this, as you may remember, and what the vote was that day was to approve, approve the preliminary plat subject to road improvements being made at Central Pike and enough turn lane being turned in there, been installed there. So, after that, LGI went back to T-Dot. We submitted the plans for turn lane, went through all the engineering and approval process with T-Dot for that. That was a very lengthy process that really has almost taken a full year since we were before you last. That just was approved this week, so we do have final T-Dot approval of the turn lane on Central Pike. So, those plans have now been approved, so the LGI isn't satisfying the requirement that this body imposed on LGI back when we were here with the preliminary plat. So, LGI is committing to build quality homes here, so they will be all brick, stone, and hardy plank siding. There will not be vinyl-sided homes in this community. They are doing a cluster design which does preserve the green space, so rather than having a bunch of houses with big lots, there'd be houses that are closer together, but it allows for more park-like, more of a park-like setting, which will have more open space with, for kids to play with, playgrounds and things like that for the neighborhood. So, they're committed to being a good neighbor with the existing Hawthorne Valley neighbors, and will do everything they part, they can to minimize any kind of negative impact during the construction process, and they certainly want to be good neighbors with all the existing community people out there and everyone who have houses... community people out there and everyone who have houses in Hawthorne Valley Section 1. So, but with that, we appreciate your consideration of this. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Do we have anyone else? Yes, ma'am.
Hi, I'm Shane Keesling. I live at 104 Hawthorne Valley. My concern is twofold. Central Pike, yes, is, where we are, it's that super curvy section, and it's already a blind spot turning in and turning out, and with all the new neighborhoods on Central Pike, the traffic has increased. And I don't, you know, my daughter's in high school now, and she's driving, and it's a raceway at school time. My biggest, so Central Pike's a big concern, but my biggest concern is the extra entrance. We've been established for 15 years, so, you know, our trees are mature, our streets are dying. If you bring in all of this new equip, all this big equipment, we are on a hill. So when you turn in off of Central Pike, you're coming in hot anyway, and you come down this hill, and it's, people do not realize that they're going 30 miles an hour coming down that hill to where my house hits at the very bottom of the hill. People fly by. I don't see construction equipment doing any different because delivery people can't even seem to go slow. We've got young kids that play in the streets. We don't have sidewalks, so they're in the streets with their scooters and bikes. If somebody's not paying attention and one of those big dump trucks or clearing vehicle, one of those kids is going to end up dead. They're not used to having to look, so they don't. There's certain times of day, of course, that are a little bit more busy, but the fact that we go on a hill and, you know, you're accelerating down, it's just a natural thing to do. We've worked with the Sheriff Department. They've come in and they've put the speed thing in to, you know, kind of help us keep track of that. We've spoke with Wilson Emergency Management, because with county, we don't, you know, they're already short-staffed. If we have a situation getting in and out that one entrance, I understand that the original plat, however many years ago, I've lived there 10 years, was for one entrance, but that was when the construction was going to all be at one time. Now we're coming into an established neighborhood with all of these heavy vehicles and ruining what we have now. I understand that the houses are going to be nice, whatever, it's not our land, but we ask you to please consider waiting till these other roads are built so that we can get a second entrance. We've got to think of the safety of our kids and just our residents. I mean, people out walk in, and again, we don't have sidewalks. I don't know if that's something the county can do. We can't get speed bumps because it's a county road. So we're just looking for help for the safety for our residents and our kids.
All right, thank you.
I do have one person who's not here that wanted something red. Is that possible?
Please, go ahead.
Okay. So her name is Leah Boeham, B-O-E-H-A-M. She says, "I'm sorry, I'm not able to be here in person, but I hope this letter will motivate you to protect our children, neighborhood, way of life and community." There is one statement that keeps sticking in my head about the whole development. Those who want it don't live here, and those that live here don't want it. This development negatively affect the safety of everyone in both neighborhoods, our property values and our quality of life forever. Last year, you, the board, voted to postpone this development because, as many of you said, it's just a bad idea. Nothing has changed to make this any better. It will in no way, shape or form help our area, county or city. If this passes, it will be one of, if not the biggest subdivision in Mount July with only one entrance and exit. The safety implications of this are terrifying. No one else in this area has one entrance and exit because it does not make sense, so much so that there are new rules and that neighborhoods of this side need two entrances, but somehow this doesn't apply to ours. While they have changed their proposal to only 80 houses for now, do you really believe they will stop at 80? It's an obvious play to avoid the second entrance. Adding 80 houses puts us over the new ordinance cap at 99. You will knowingly be putting two neighborhoods and their children in danger. WEMA is dangerously understaffed. Adding this many houses will put an extreme strain on the department. WEMA Director Joey Cooper said so in an interview with News 2 out of Nashville back in 2022. The addition of this many houses is going to put a huge strain on first responders and their response time to any emergency. Law enforcement is also greatly understaffed, and cluster homes are notorious for bringing crime rates up per metro Nashville police. I spoke, office I spoke with a few weeks ago. We are not in city limits. We are county, and the closest sheriff office who responds to our 911 calls comes from Lebanon 15 miles away. This builder wants to use our hilly single entrance for their development, but refuse to follow any of our HOA bylaws, which would help maintain the quality and home values of the existing houses in Hawthorne Valley. They want to be a separate neighborhood, but utilize our road and put our children at risk with the heavy machinery that comes along with years and years of construction, but also the high-traffic volume that will come along with 80 to 146 additional houses, repairmen, delivery vehicles, trash pickup, school buses and more. When it gets icy in the winter, our hill becomes impassable, and we are often stuck in our neighborhood. What will happen with 100 to 200 additional cars trying to get out of the neighborhood during that time?
I have to look at the plan.
We have also had to repair the road due to damage caused by only our 43 houses' worth of traffic. What is going to happen with the additional strain of construction traffic and the 100 to 200 additional vehicles from the new houses? We do not have sidewalks, therefore, anyone who wants to walk, run, bike or walk their pets must be in the street. Our kids ride their bikes extremely often in the road, but as a mom, I would be terrified to let our daughter ride her bike or walk to a neighborhood friend's house due to being scared she would be hit by a car or truck. Our schools are already over max capacity. Bladville Elementary was at 108% last year, and there are so many portable buildings at a school we can have and maintain its high quality of education and well-being of the children going in. Wilson County is known for its wonderful public schools, but they are also extremely short-staffed and overcrowded. With Ravens Crest and its 450-plus houses and two other neighborhoods going along South Mount July Road near Stewart's Berry, our schools are going to struggle heavily with this sudden boom in population. These additional 80 to 146 houses are going to wreak havoc on our school. Joe Padilla, a school board member, has been raising the alarm about this for a long time, and someone needs to heed the red flags that are all around us. I am very aware that we cannot stop them from building because it's their property. All I'm asking is for another postponement until our county's infrastructure, emergency services, schools and roads can catch up with the rapid growth we are already seeing in our area. Many of you grew up around our neighborhood, and no Central Pike is already struggling to handle the additional traffic, additional semi-trucks, additional school buses and more that it already must deal with on a daily basis. Safety is our number-one concern. Growth is good as long as it's done responsibly. Those that want this don't live here, and those that do live here don't want it. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have anyone else wishing to speak on this case today?
Hello. Thank you for hearing us out today. As a mother of two littles, I really just want to implore you all to consider the safety of our kids. She's outside every day during the summer, and that hill, we're right off that hill, and delivery people, they fly through that neighborhood, and with those big construction trucks coming through, I really fear for my two children's safety. So I'm just here to echo what everybody else said, and please consider the safety of our children. Oh, Alex, I'm in Hawthorne Valley.
Thank you. Do we have anyone else wishing to speak on this case today?
Hi there. I'm Nate Van Ada. I'm a five-year resident of Hawthorne Valley. I really just want everyone to kind of hear our message today. I think I'm in agreement with everyone that we do not expect this land to not be developed. We understand it's their property, but I just want to address the facing of the homes and what they're going to look like. This isn't a vanity request on our behalf. We appreciate that to try to keep the home values up, but that's not what this is about. I also am a new father. I've worked really hard to find the perfect home for my family, and it was here in Wilson County, and I love it. And it's not about the vanity of how the new houses are going to look. It's about the safety of our kids and my child. It's about taking away the home that I've worked so hard for, being perfect for my family, and making it a danger zone for the next X number of years as this development continues. I just hope you will take that to heart. I don't think anyone on this panel, if you were being asked to have your home changed, your community changed, to have the safety of your children put at risk for these additional homes with no second entrance, which is all we really want, is to help keep our streets safe. I'm going to repeat it, we have no sidewalks. I walk with my family almost every day, and it's dangerous enough as it is. You've heard the hill coming into the neighborhood, the excess traffic, and I know that property was originally designed to have one entrance, but things have changed drastically in this county, even in the time that I have lived there. It cannot sustain that much traffic in one entrance and still be safe to allow my daughter to walk to her friend's house. I'm not going to be able to do that anymore. That changes the life that we are setting up for our families in that community. And I just want you to think about that as you take into consideration all of the data and the facts that everyone else is able to bring forward. And I know I'm not doing a great job at not leading with my emotions here and bringing any data for you, but that is what I want you to hear. It's going to change my home and our homes forever. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning, Commissioners. My name is Thomas Kern. I live at 114 Hawthorne Valley. I'm the longest-tenured resident of the neighborhood. We have about 41 homes there, and it's been great. I moved in in 2008. And yes, we do expect development to come behind us. Just the safety issues that everyone has talked about already is what concerns me. I live on a cul-de-sac. I have five school buses every morning, five school buses every afternoon that come in my cul-de-sac. I can't imagine what 156 homes or even 80 additional homes is going to do to the school bus traffic and the kids, and that's my concern.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Good morning. My name is Lori Dalton. I am the VP for Timmons Property Management, and we manage the Hawthorne Valley subdivision. And you've already heard from everyone else about the safety, but I need to just tell you about the expense we already are occurring and paying for as an HOA on our roads with just the 46 homes we have and the actual delivery trucks. I mean, the first year, we had cracks that were half an inch all the way down through them around the corner. Well, we couldn't get anyone out to fix it. You know, they're public roads, you know, county roads, so they wouldn't fix it, so we paid a vendor ourselves to come out and fill those cracks because we were told it could be up to a year before they came out. Well, we finally got them to come out, and they only patched one corner. Those cracks are already starting to separate again, so can you imagine any heavier traffic on those roads? So we just want you to also consider that, not just, you know, the safety is our big thing, but also already the roads just are not going to support as much heavy traffic as we're going to be seeing once they start coming in. So we just want to let you all know about that, too. You've heard all the other things, but this is important as well because they're already cracking again. We need somebody back out there again, and we've called and we're on the list. And I understand how crazy and busy it is, but that list is long, and we're probably going to end up having to make a repair again ourselves at our expense. So, and just please take that in consideration as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have anyone else wishing to speak on this case today? At this time, we'll close the public comments section. Do we have any questions from our board?
Tom, does the applicant meet all of the requirements from your office?
They do. And there is one item that was mentioned, which is the two entrances for subdivisions with 99 lots or more. They had vested entitlements that mean that this does not, that requirement does not apply to them. That that requirement does not apply to this development because of vesting rights that were passed by the state of Tennessee, not by this board.
Tom, when it was brought before us before, and I'm sorry, it's been a while back, did we defer it?
I think you may have deferred it, and then they went back and did some additional work and came back. They were trying to find that additional connection, as I recall, because you guys really did not feel good about passing it with the one entrance if you could, if there was any way to find at least a construction entrance, even if it were by easement, that was not a permitted entrance, and they were not able to do that. And after some discussion, and I think the developers' legal counsel showing up, you know, explaining that they did have vested entitlements to the property, I think there was a negotiation about, well, is there enough right-of-way in Central Pike that they could go to the state and ask for that improvement that would benefit both neighborhoods by allowing for, through traffic on Central Pike to get past the development with people getting in and out, which was something that they were able to investigate and submit to the state of Tennessee and get passed. And you did pass it, as I recall, with that requirement that they seek that TDOT improvement.
So we have passed it, subject to being able to obtain what they've now been able to attain?
Yes.
Okay. All right. Do we have any other questions from our board?
I'll just look at Mr. Chairman, those two cul-de-sacs. Are we talking about opening up one of those cul-de-sacs? Construction project?
Right. Well, Central Pike is up here.
Right.
Up here in Hawthorne Valley, kind of circuitous, it comes down the hill, and then they're looking at connecting to the public road system right there. And then, did we have the subdivision plat? Oh, it's two pages, but that's where they would connect. They're leaving a little bit of buffer before they start their housing, which are these lots, and then the previous page shows the remainder of it to the south.
And is Chris Luber still there? Chris, there was a question asked to some of the improvements they were going to have to make for you originally, I think. Was there something that had to be raised up because of a flooding issue?
The pump station that serves current Hawthorne Valley as well as proposed to serve this portion is down at the bottom of this parcel.
Yeah, so it's not actually in a flood plain, but they have agreed to raise it up, relocate it, take care of it for us to...
And that's just due to field review by staff noting that down where the pump station is did look as though water inundations had gotten up pretty high on the actual power grid for the pump station.
Chris, how many homes will that system cover when you get it developed out?
System cover? Well, they have enough soils available for what they're requesting. It's all approved, yes.
So that's where you start, you don't go beyond that amount?
Well, they only requested approval for those number of soils credits. I'm not aware of any other connecting development to what they're developing, propose now.
Thank you, sir. Any other questions from our board?
Just one. In other words, Tom, we really don't have the authority to require another entrance.
Not in my opinion, but I'm not the attorney, so.
Do we have any other questions? Okay. Any other questions from our board? Do we have a motion? We've closed the public comment section, sir. I'm sorry. Do we have a motion?
In light of, Mr. Chairman, of the developers' meeting, all regulations, I move to agree about this subject here, requirements.
Motion by Mr. Jewell to approve. Do we have a second? A second by Mr. Noakes. All those in favor, please raise your right hand. We have two, three?
Mr. Chairman, abstention.
Okay. We have three yeses and one abstention. All those against, vote no, please, raise your right hand. We have five against. We've got an abstention. All those against. What now? Against, one, two, three, four, five, six.
So the subdivision plat approval fails.
Six to three with one abstention.
Okay.
Okay. Thank you.
Ask questions?
Yes, sir.
Do we get a reason for the denial?
I'm gonna let Mike speak to that.
Probably the thing that we need to do, 'cause it sounds like this might be going up, is the folks that are against it need to make a motion to deny it and state their reasons, so that I have a basis to defend it.
We need another motion, is what you need?
I think so.
Okay. I would call for another motion. Is that correct?
Yeah, now, it's not approved, okay? That's making. But if you do the motion to deny, and he gets a six vote, give the reason. What I'm looking for is to give the reasons. That's what I have to relate to.
Yes, sir, Mr. Wood.
I just wanna know why, well, I'm not gonna say, you know what you're doing, but have we ever did that before? When we deny something, have to give a reason? I hadn't.
You...
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir. You do typically wanna give a reason.
If we go to court.
I'll give a reason why I'm against it, if that's what you're asking.
We need an emotion.
It needs to be, it needs to be something, and y'all heard some reasons here today. I'll tell you what can be, what it can't be, okay? And y'all make the choice. I'm not advocating either way. It can be safety, it can be health, it can be traffic, it can be danger. Some of those are basically saying the same thing. It cannot be that it harms property things. That is not a separate reason. There are hundreds of cases that say that. Quality of life is evil. If you're saying, you know, we're used to it being this way, and they'll change it, that's not good enough. If it's quality of life in that we have an area that's safe now, but will not be safe after this, that may be.
Okay. You wanna make a motion, Mr. Ricketts?
Sheriff, can I say one more thing? Do you have to tell your...
Yes, sir. Well, that's my bad. We closed the public comment at this time, sir. I apologize. Mr. Ricketts, you wanted to make a motion, sir.
I'm not making a motion. What did you say? Forgive a reason?
Yes.
Okay, I'm making a motion, and why I'm against it.
Okay.
We passed a while back, which it's outdated now, that if you have over a hundred homes, you're supposed to have an exit.
A second exit.
If I'm looking here, I heard a comment, there was forty-something lots there now. Did somebody mention that? Okay, if you've got eighty and forty, that's a hundred and twenty. Now, I don't know how the law we're breaking is there, but then again, I'm familiar with that area there, and that's steep. I appreciate them working with TDOT to get the turn lane. But when you start getting these big construction trucks going in and out, in and out, all the time, it's gonna be terrible. It's gonna be, there's gonna be an accident there on the top of that hill. These people need to work harder to find a fifty-foot right-of-way or something to heart create a road at the back for all the construction stuff going on. And that's my reason. Not land values or nothing, it's just that.
So is that in the form of a motion?
That's my form of a motion, why I'm against it.
How many commission that we denied the request on the basis of safety issues?
We have a motion to deny based on safety issues. And a second by Mr. Thompson. All those in favor, vote aye. One, two, three, four, five, six, seven. We have seven fours. Those against?
Against what?
The motion.
For safety issues.
We have one vote against and one abstention.
Two.
Where's the second one?
You didn't raise your hand here now.
She didn't raise her hand, she couldn't. That motion will carry seven to two with one abstention.
Who seconded?
I did.
Mr. Thompson.
And it was seven to three?
Seven to two with one abstention.
Just for clarification, just to clarify.
Yes, sir.
So they come back, add it with ingress or regress out of that property, other than what's there now, and let's refile, hopefully, Tom?
I'm sorry. They would have to refile if they choose to handle it through this board.
Okay. We're now ready for the final on Mystic Ova Estates.
Mystic Ova Estates, formerly known as Leeward Estates, consisting of fifty-five lots on North Lakeview Drive. This is a final plat, and the final plat does meet requirements, and staff can recommend approval.
Okay. Do we have anyone here wishing to speak on this case today?
We got one.
Yes, sir, Mr. Lane.
I'm Randy Lane with TTL. We're the engineers for the project. We've addressed the comments from the county and feel like we've met all the requirements. We've done the environmental study. We've made the adjustments necessary from that and feel like we're in compliance.
Thank you, sir.
Outline some of the requirements, if you would, on the environmental study that you...
We did find one area that was considered an aquatic feature, and we've put the appropriate buffers around that and stayed away from it.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else wishing to speak? Yes, ma'am, please come forward.
Hi, I'm Nancy Freeman, and I live in that area. And I guess this is a moot point, but I, y'all ever heard about Sampson? I mean, David and Goliath? Well, our folk, we feel like we are David without any rocks. And I, and we, you know, we're just, we're small, you know, big pond, but I don't know, I just, I'm not happy, and nobody cares if I'm happy or not, you know? But a lot of our, my folks, none of my neighbors are here because everybody gave up, but I'm here, and I don't have much to say. I understand progress, and, you know, I'm old against progress, I guess, but, and I understand that it's probably gonna pass, but just reduce the number of homes. That little bitty area does not need fifty-four homes, and we have the same issues as the other people who have spoken today. Every one of those issues are valid. Our road is not big enough hardly for two cars to go down, but, and we're already hearing all that noise at seven AM, and it's, I know, I'm going on, I'm rambling, but thank you, and I thank you for what you're doing, and I am not for this kind of progress, and neither are my neighbors. And that is a well-established neighborhood. I've been there thirty years. Lot of them have been there longer than me. Anyway, thank you for your time, and have a heart for us, the little people that are not rich, so.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else wishing to speak on this case today? Ms. Bowman?
Beth Bowman, 2055 Bullets Free Road, District Six, Commissioner. I'm just repassing out for the final vote today, all of the concerns and support for this development. On page three, you will find one new concern. That's the only concern that has not been heard by this board previously. Ms. Clements, Jennifer Clements, expressed concern over reindeer moss on the property. She had an environmental concern, and it sounds like that that concern has been addressed in the environmental study that's been submitted. I did let Christopher know that that concern was present. Overarching, I would just say, the bulleted points for the community in regards to their concerns are that it is a one-way in and out to this development, the roads, the increased traffic, flooding, and the step system, and that the support for this development would be that they know the builder and they support him in the improvement to home values. Thank you.
Thank you.
May I respond to Commissioner Bowman?
Yes, sir.
Commissioner Bowman, I had a discussion with the engineer for the development this morning, and I asked them specifically about reindeer moss, and they said that they did not know of any reindeer moss on the property, but then again, they weren't necessarily looking for it. It was the first that they'd heard about it. So, you know, the board, if they wish, may ask to approve with a circumstance that they review...
Randy, will y'all commit to... I'm sorry, Jordan, if you want to, I'm sorry.
I just, I didn't know of the reindeer moss until this morning. I haven't asked my environmental guys that went out there to look what they found, so... But if they had found reindeer moss, they would have reported it, so if it's in an area where it would be critical to the development, so, and obviously, we'll look into it.
Thank you.
But it's not an issue. I don't think it's...
Mr. Chairman, she may have some information.
Yes, ma'am.
Do I need to come in there and not just speak from here?
You're okay right there, ma'am.
Because of the recording, she may need to come to the mic.
I apologize. Yes, ma'am, please.
I'm sorry, ma'am.
No, no, no problem. Thank you. Excuse me, I'm sorry about being emotional over this, but we have found that reindeer moss, and it's all through that area, and I have seen it. I could've brought you a piece, but I thought I shouldn't, so.
Thank you. Yes, ma'am, thank you.
Trespass.
Mr. Fleming, I'm sorry.
Good morning, everybody. We're excited about this project. I've been up here before a couple of different times. It is a, it's a positive impact, a value-add, in an area that could use some stimulation, some money inserted, some new construction. We respect all the neighbors and the people that live there. We wanna be a value-add whenever we come in. That's why we've committed to improving the road system, twenty-five hundred linear feet widening up North Lakeview Drive. We've added fire protection, fire hydrants outside of our community, proposed and submitted to help for, you know, fire protection and fire hydrants. We've got capacity for additional sewer credits. This is an area that's largely rock. Wilson County has a lot of rock, so there's value and benefit if there's failures, if there's people that need to tie in, that can also be an added value on it all. There's a lot of common concerns with stormwater, roads, drainage. We've had people come up and talk about bats. We've had people talk about now reindeer moss. I've got text messages where people wanna come in and put a bald eagle nest on the property. And to that, I do wanna go ahead and say, I kinda got a line in the sand, especially after last weekend. If you don't have permission to be on that property, please refrain from being on that property. It is posted. I do have cameras out there. There's nothing like opening day of turkey season and setting up and seeing decoys out there and people walking through that don't have permission, so I just wanna say, it is a no trespassing unless you have permission. And we have debunked all the environmental concerns. We're to design standards. We have engineers. You guys have third-party layers for, you know, road commission, stormwater, and everything else to make sure that we fit all the criteria. I am the landowner. It is A1, all comply, complete guidelines are met, and I appreciate your vote for approval today.
Thank you, sir. Do we have anyone else wishing to speak on this case today? We'll close the public comment portion. Do we have any questions from our board? Okay. Do we have a motion?
Motion to approve subject staff recommendations.
Motion to approve, Mr. Ash, second by Mr. Jewell, to approve subject staff recommendations. All those in favor, vote aye. And those opposed, motion carries. Are we ready for the preliminary for the CASA 2710?
Mr., I'm sorry. Somebody say something?
I was asking Haskell what the count was. He didn't count it.
Oh. Are you ready to proceed?
Yes, sir, we're ready.
Okay. Preliminary plat on CASA 2710, further note, formerly known as Armstrong Subdivision, consisting of forty-six lots at 2710 South Mount Juliet Road, references map ninety-nine, parcels eighty-nine, and ninety point zero one. This plat meets requirements, and staff can recommend approval.
Okay.
Can you proceed to the plat, if you don't mind?
Do we have anyone here today wishing to speak on this case? Yes, sir, Mr. Griffin.
Good morning again, Kyle Griffin, CSTG. What you have in front of you is a renewed preliminary plat. The previous one is expired now. This site is actively under construction, and our intent is to file a final plat after this gets approved.
And you, explain why you revised it.
It's the same as it was before.
It's a renewal? I thought that you had revised the phase line or something as well. Okay, I've got, I'm confused with...
It's just a renewal.
That's Autumn Breeze, I apologize. It's one just to the north of it.
Thank you, sir. Do we have anyone else wishing to speak on this case today? Okay. Do we have any questions from our board? Do we have a motion?
So be it. Your staff recommendation.
We have a motion to approve from Mr. Wood, subject staff recommendations. Do we have a second?
Second.
I have a second from Ms. Weathers. All those in favor, vote aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries. Ready for a sketch plat for Cumberland Oaks?
Yes, sir, this is a sketch plat. The plat, the sketch plat meets requirements with regard to zoning entitlements. As a notice to the applicant, there should be, that right now, if you'll go, proceed to the plat. Out here, on the very west end of this sheet of paper, is Bates Road, and at present, they're showing a proposed entrance lane being added. I was, I wanted to point out that unless the road commission says otherwise, the minimum standard is also to, a requirement for an inclusion of a southbound center turn lane on Bates Road. They are also proposing, I don't know if you can see, Chafford Place, again, kinda to the left end of the screen, for the purposes of the video. Chafford Place subdivision is right here, and Chafford Place Drive is the center spine road that serves that neighborhood. Because of the newer hundred-lot requirement for two ways in and out of every subdivision, by the thirtieth lot being developed by the new development, they are proposing to connect Chafford Place for one of their entrances and Bates Road for their other. They also have road frontage on Yelton Road. However, Yelton Road is, while it's a public road, it's a very narrow road that likely would be impacted by, negatively with addition of further traffic without significant improvement to the entirety of Yelton Road, which they don't have control of.
Okay, thank you.
And this is a sketch plat, so it's conceptual. And it is in the Spencer Creek watershed. I should've brought that up. If you wish to consider the current study that's going on by the Corps of Engineers.
Mr. McFarland.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Jerry McFarland, the county commissioner of District Five. There's two or three things that need to be noted on this. First of all, you've heard in previous testimony on previous cases here, the issue of safety and connecting this new subdivision to Chafford Place would certainly endanger almost thirty homes and the children's there. Been on that street, been to meetings down there, children playing in the street, chalking in the street, thirty feet from the front door, you in the street, no sidewalks, it's just a danger. So what I'm asking, first of all, is that the connection there be delayed as long as possible to eliminate any traffic there. And Tom told me that the other day, and I totally agree with it, that this would be the construction road, there would be no construction.
That's our anticipation. I cannot speak for the road commission, but that's a direct connection to Bates Road.
Correct.
Which is the entrance that's stubbing out furthest to the left on the sheet of paper for the purposes of the video.
There?
Yes.
Okay.
They can't see the laser pointer on the recording, so that's why I'm descriptive.
Okay, that's fine, that's fine. My concern is construction equipment going through and existing subdivision, small children, no sidewalks. And that needs to be a requirement of the construction company to use those roads, either that or Yelton Road one, for that. And I know there's people here that like to speak to additional problems that may require them, but safety has always got to be our most primary concern, and that going through Chafford Place would certainly be a... through Chafford Place would certainly be a, be a immense problem. So, uh, my request to this commission will be to have those developers, uh, make that tie-in as late as possible in their constr, overall construction period, sir. So, that'd be my request.
Thank you, sir.
Yes, sir.
Do we have anyone else wishing to speak on this case today?
My name is Chad Pilcher. I'm a resident of Chafford Place, have been for almost three and a half years. Um, just to piggy, piggyback off of what Mr. Jerry said, um, we're a small little neighborhood, um, with a lot of kids. Um, I've got a three-year-old myself, no sidewalks, um, youngins playing in the kid all the time. They're accustomed to it because there's no, we're a tight-knit community. Um, that's what they know, ride bikes, uh, sidewalk chalk, um, all that stuff. So, with the entrance coming in, I'm assuming two entrances, fire marshal requires that? Is that what the-
No, no, it's a subdivision, it's a, it's a subdivision regulation amendment, uh, that was passed within the last six months.
For emergency vehicles?
For, for, for secondary entrance after the first 30 lots of any proposed development occurs, they have to have a secondary active entrance.
Okay, and that's not driven by, um-
I'm, I'm sure, you, I'm sure some of the justification for it has to do with emergency services. Yes, sir. Um, so that there's different ways in and out of a neighborhood. Um, however, um, the, the reason for the requirement is by action of this planning commission.
Okay. I, we're not opposed to the development at all. I mean, we, we get it, we understand it. I'm not here to protest the development. But if that egress off of Chafford is for emergency vehicles and whatnot, um, we're proposing a gate with a Knox box.
It's not exclusive to emergency services.
Okay.
That connection at all.
And, and the gate with the Knox box, you would have to take that through the road commission to get approval, and then, once that happens, that road is there and there to forward a private road, um, that is responsibly, the, the maintenance of which is responsible to homeowners. It will no longer be a public road, uh, if they pass it, but-
Okay. I have sex, I do it in Davidson County for egress of fire trucks and whatever, so, um, even though it's in the county, I was just curious.
So, you, you, you really can't gate that as a public road?
Okay.
The only way you would gate it is if you agreed as a homeowners association or as a neighborhood to make it a private road and put it behind a gate. And you would have, by state law, you would have to have a Knox box for emergency access.
Sure. Okay. Um, like I said, it, it's, uh, if we could find another route in, um, eh, no construction to go through there, I, I don't, I'm around construction workers every day, uh, they're not going to turn around that road and come out when they see a sign that says no construction to go through here.
Again, I, yeah, I can't, I can't speak for the road commission. They're not, they're not in attendance, uh, at our planning commission meeting today that I know of, but, uh, I can tell you that I think the logical, um, solution here is that they will make the Bates Road entrance their primary entrance for construction traffic and ongoing traffic. After, I think it's the first 30 lots, is that not correct, Chris?
Thirty-three lots.
Thirty-three lots. Um, they do have to make the secondary connection, and certainly, we can put up signs that say no construction traffic, but I can't stop every drywall contractor.
I'm not asking you to, what I'm saying is, they're not going to listen, you know?
Yeah.
Are all of them going to use the, uh, the majority of them going to use the main entrance? Absolutely. But there's going to be delivery drivers, concrete trucks, whatever. Um, like I said, we have no sidewalks, um, we got kids in the street all the time. Um, again, we're not against the development, just please be mindful of our children.
That's going to be when you get up there and speak.
That's all I've got. Appreciate your time. I mean, I don't mind passing out for you, but are you going to speak? Please take time to consider.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Please.
Uh, I've been asked to pass this out by someone who doesn't wish to speak, so.
Okay, yes, sir.
I, I guess I've lost my military map reading skills, but I looked at this map, I can't find any roads on it, so.
It's a sketch plat.
The, the, the map that I'm looking at, I did not realize that this was in the, uh, planning area for, uh, Spencer Creek. Are you sure it is, Tom?
Uh, I'd have to go back a little bit, but I believe part of it is.
I didn't think it did, but as I was starting to state it earlier, if we're going to add 157 houses, uh, and streets and, and skew the base plan that the corps has put together, and we're planning on spending another $90,000 on an additional, planning two that Tom's going to have, I, I just wish this thing could be put off left of our plans, uh, our study could be done, sir.
The jury's question about whether or not it's in the Spencer Creek watershed to the northwest portion of this, this plan, uh, north, northeast portion of this plan, that's Old Hickory Lake. That is not, Spencer Creek would be to the west across the peninsula. However, there are portions of this that are right on the border of where that watershed line is, which would be top of Ridge. Um, so I do think there may be at least some portions of this that are in the Spencer Creek watershed, not the whole 156 lots of it.
Well, they're difficult to tell from this map, but anyway, my, my request would be that this be laid until such time our study is complete, we don't miss that, that if we've already spent $175,000 worth of county money and getting ready to spend some more, and, uh, I don't want to feet the direction in which we're going, having a tool that you guys can use, we can use to know what will, will not flood in the future. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Mike Haynak. I live at 115 Chafford Place, and I've been there 17 years. Uh, one problem, as you can see from this, basically, everyone that lives in the north of this development is going to use Chafford Place to come and go after, after construction traffic. At the, as you turn up Bates, there's a hill, and it's, it's like this. There's already been limited, it says limited site, there's signs up there, li, um, hidden driveways, everything else. There's no place to put a deceleration lane going either way without starting it below the hill to come up. You're going to have, your traffic is going to increase there by about, I would say, 300 to 400% of what we have now. We have 50 cars a day, not counting delivery, on Chafford Place. It's going to go to 500 because it's going to come, come in and out. And with that problem at the top of that hill there, it's going to be extremely dangerous because you can't put a deceleration lane in. So, somebody's going to come over, be turning into Chafford Place, another 20 people are going to be coming right behind them. If you develop Yelton Road down here, where that is, that has virtually a half-mile visibility in either direction. It's flat, and there's only four houses down Yelton that would be impacted by this, and they're way off what would prevent the road frontage. In our area, we live right on the road. So, we have 21 houses, and like this, someone's already put out 30 children. So, the Yelton, developing Yelton makes far more sense because it is a flat, easily visible, and it's the equal distance from the ex, the one they're proposing, it's just south instead of north and avoids the hills.
Thank you, sir. Do we have anyone else wishing to speak today? Yes, sir.
Thank you all. My name's Adam Sager. I'm with Dale and Associates. I'm the applicant for this development. We're the civil engineer representing the owner of the property. Um, I appreciate you all here in this case today. We've walked the property. I feel this is a beautiful property for, for development. It's right on the lake, as, as Tom said. Uh, the plant is right across the river there. This is up on a bluff, it's really high. So, I heard Spencer Creek mentioned, we have done hydraulic determination on this property. Yeah, there's a few sinkholes, we're staying away from them. Uh, there is a jurisdictional waterway that drains to the north directly into the Cumberland River. This doesn't drain into any other immediate creeks in the area. Um, I can't speak to the fringes of Spencer Creek, but what I'm saying is, most of this property is sitting really high, and most of it drains directly into the Cumberland River. We are here for a sketch plan, um, to get these feedbacks, to get your thoughts. We engaged the cluster lot provision, we're zoned R1. Um, the cluster lot provision allows us to condense the houses. The client on this one doesn't want to maximize this like a can of sardines, and so, we did not really push real hard on reducing lot size and reducing all of that. We took the HD, identified the sinkholes, the drainage areas, and you can see all these pockets through there where we hope to have walking trails, preserve hills, preserve trees, things like that. Uh, every lot in here is at least, uh, 100 feet wide. Um, and, uh, early, there was a comment on the access to the development off of Bates Road. We're in agreement, we provided an updated drawing to Chris saying, uh, we put a note on it to say, we're in agreement with whatever the highway commission wants to do to provide a left turn in, southbound left turn, a right turn, decel lane is already on the plans, so we're willing to provide any access. Uh, I haven't spoken to the neighbors at Chafford, and I understand your concerns. And for that reason, what we tried to do, w- we have a requirement when we lay this out to obey your laws and make that connection. And so, I'm not opposed to, uh, a crash gate, like you mentioned. I'm not opposed to that. Um, any kind of deterrent to prevent our community from driving through Chafford, because they've been there for a long time. So, what I've done, just in the layout-wise, is you can see where I just made a real little short turn. I know it's not huge, but we're doing what we can, because anytime you make a turn, it, it starts to deter people. People want to get out to the main road as quick as possible. So, we made the main road go all the way through, so if you look at all those lots and you're driving along, you would have to stop and turn to go through Chafford Place, but you keep on going all the way through to Bates if you want to keep on going. So, you'd have to make a deliberate turn to go through Chafford. Again, it's not huge, we're doing what we can, and we understand your concerns. Um, let's see, I heard cluster lots, sidewalk access, oh, traffic study has been performed that will go in, in the preliminary plat, um, as, as required. We think this is a, a great, beautiful development, um, cluster lot, but not tight, kind of spread out, houses on the lake, uh, going to prov, provide an amenity center with a dock, been talking with the corps about getting a private dock for the community. Um, and we've studied soils, so we've got that covered. Um, again, sketch plat, like to get your thoughts and would appreciate your approval. I'm here if you all have any other questions on it.
Thank you, sir.
Mr. Chairman, can I?
I'm sorry.
I have a question for the-
Definition.
We've, we've done a lot of developments around that incorporate a crash gate. Um, and, and Tom, to what you were saying before about privatizing the road on a gate, the way I would see it, this wouldn't, if a crash gate were implemented, it wouldn't be gating a community like you would get, like when we drive into gates with the pillars and everything and the keys and everything else. What we've done on other ones is, an existing subdivision doesn't always like a new subdivision driving through them. And so, all it is, is a deterrent for the public people to drive through that other subdivision. There is still an option to get out to the public road, and so, I don't know y'all's laws and whatnot, I'm not here to say how it works, but the crash gates that we've experienced in the past would be for only fire trucks, ambulance, they either crash through them because it's an emergency, or there would be, um, what do you call the little sensors that they, they go through it. But that, that's been our experience, I know.
Thank you. Uh, Mr. Turner had a question for you, sir.
Have you guys, how come you're not looking at Yelton as another entry versus, uh, Chafford?
Well, the main entry is Bates.
Right. Your second entry, I mean.
We, we, the, the second entry, Yelton, um, if you go out there today, it looks like a private driveway, it behaves like a private driveway, I think it's being used as a private driveway.
You're talking about Yelton?
When we first looked at it, I thought, I mean, we're like, well, we, we can't use that, that, these guys live here, I don't want to come in and disrupt them. And so, like, like Tom said, it's, it's like a strip of asphalt that goes down through a field. It doesn't-
Whereas Chafford Place is a standard 28-foot wide curve and gutter road section.
Yeah.
But the county built it and maintained it.
The county didn't build it. The developer of Chafford Place built it, but the county maintained, it's been turned over, it's a county public road. And the county maintains Yelton, just in a-
And, and Yelton has some real ni, it has trees along it, it's real, kind of pretty, really. I mean, that's not something we wanted to come in and disrupt, but, but that's why.
Again, but here, may I say, excuse me, I've been around four houses versus 21.
Sir, could you speak? Could you speak?
Sorry, my ear is bleeding, that's true. Four houses versus 21 impacted on Yelton. Better site both directions. The, um, si, state of the road, yes, it's a smaller road, but if it's a county road, it could be improved and without impacting anything at all, because you have, they have huge amounts of space on either side. In our area, the kids are in the road.
Thank you, sir. Yes, ma'am.
I've lived on Chafford Place for 16 years. I would like to address, when was this property rezoned?
This property was rezoned in the early to mid 2000s.
Well, I've lived there 16 years, and there was never a posting for rezoning request.
I, I couldn't tell you that long ago. Um, I can tell you, in my time as director, we have implemented posting of this, of rezonings.
As for Yelton Road, I'll tell you why it's not being used.
And right now, this is not a rezoning, just to be clear, this is a subdivision.
I know, I know. It was rezoned, we were kind of blindsided to that, we thought it was still agricultural. However, Yelton Road isn't being considered because Reba McIntyre owns that land, and her brother-in-law lives up Yelton Road. That's why it's not being considered. Our property, our, our small community, we know we can't stop that development, but we're asking you to have consideration for our children, the people walking the street, our children going to a bus stop at the end of road, Bates Road, they walk down that every morning, and that hill, right to the right of Chafford, is blind, blind. I've almost been rear-ended. Uh, it's, it's a serious left turn there because people come over the hill fast, they don't see you until the last minute. Coming out of Bates, out of Chafford, you're going to get hit in the front, the same direction. You put that, that many people in that small of an area, they will come out Chafford. I don't care if there is a turn there, they'll find that that's going to be their, their route. There's going to be some serious accidents, serious accidents, because it is so blind. We have a serious problem now, but there's only 21 homes there. Yelton is the most obvious, it, they can tie into any of those cul-de-sacs. There's only four homes there, and they're set back from the road very far. They've got property there that butts up to Yelton that can be used. To, to make that road a little wider and much more obvious of an access, they're double access. That's my, thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Do we have anyone else wishing to speak on this case today?
I can say something else?
Please let, let, please, come ahead, sir.
I have a question, from the infrastructure that is proposed, um, this might be a question for you. Looks like they're going to try to tap our water main, and we're already struggling with water pressure.
It's not, not a water service, sir.
Okay.
It's, it's, uh, Legato Utility District, so you need to speak with.
Okay, all right. Fair enough.
Matt, please, come ahead, sir.
My name's Jay Zilke. I live at 107 Chafford Place. Um, and my, my biggest issue, and I understand development, it's going to happen, and we always knew, I've lived there for 13 years, there's a chance of the beautiful property bias being built, but, uh, my biggest concern is the safety. Um, just to hit on what everybody else was talking about, we do have numerous children up and down that street all the time. Um, there's vehicles that aren't supposed to be parked on the street, that do get parked on the street, and it drives me crazy because my kids are in and out all the time, and there's elderly people that walk up and down the road. And we don't have that much traffic volume right now, but with the traffic volume that we do have, there is definitely a safety issue currently. Um, using Chafford Place as an access for all these cars, um, it's a concern of mine for the safety of my children, all the children that come to visit this neighborhood, we don't have sidewalks, um, and I don't want to see anybody get hurt, not my children, anybody else's children, anybody at all. Um, and my fear is, by using Chafford Place here, we're putting a lot of families and, and lives at risk. So, I just wanted to, uh, make sure that I addressed that. Um, I guess that's really all that I have for right now.
Thank you, sir.
Great, thank you.
Do we have anyone else wishing to speak? Yes, sir.
Hello, my name is Barry Boston. I live at 113 Chafford Place. I've been there for nine years. nine years. I did almost witness a child get run over. I was waiting on the school bus for my daughter to get off. Another lady was standing with me waiting for her child to get off, and she had a younger child. Luckily, the gentleman driving up the road was paying attention. The child decided to dart across the road to the other side and just barely got missed from being hit. I just want to reiterate what the others have said. I'm just afraid with that much more traffic, the chance of it happening is just going to go that much greater. So, thank you so much.
Yes, sir. Thank you. Do we have anyone else wishing to speak on this case today? This time, we'll close the public comments section, and I will ask if the board has any questions.
Mr. Chairman, this is a sketch plat. It, we're tasked with making sure that it meets the zoning criterion, as well as some subdivision criterion. This meets the zoning criterion. If you wish for them to consider a connection to Yelton in lieu of, or in addition to, a connection to Chafford Place, I don't have a problem with you asking them to consider that. However, I will point out that Yelton Road does appear to be very narrow, to the point that even in the road commission's own documentation, it's only a 20-foot wide right-of-way, not the pavement width. The right-of-way is 20-foot right, 20-foot width of right-of-way, which is substandard to the 28-foot wide curve and gutter section that we would typically require in a subdivision. Now, while they could widen along their frontage on Yelton Road, on their side, to improve that section, they can't do the whole thing. Secondly, I'm looking at the plat for Chafford Place, and it clearly stipulates that there's a temporary cul-de-sac at the end of the development that these individuals should have been made aware of when they purchased their property, showing that it was supposed to connect through to additional property. I don't mean to sound jaded, or cold, or anything else, but we, we asked for those secondary, those temporary cul-de-sacs and connections to other properties specifically to allow for cross-connection, so that if they, if this development hypothetically got built, and they had a good friend in Chafford Place, they don't have to drive out onto Bates Road, go up the road less than a quarter mile and drive into Chafford Place, further congesting Bates Road, which, as we all know, is going to get more congested as we receive more growth, just like every other road in the county. As far as, we've heard a lot about children. I have children. I've had young, I've had littles. I've ha, I've got a teenager now. My, I've got one that's fixing to get out of college. I sympathize with everybody's concern for safety of their children. And I understand that if you live on a smaller subdivision road that's got a lot of bikes, bike activity and everything, I grew up riding a bike everywhere. I don't think people do that. I rode halfway across the county, but I don't think people do that anymore. But, but I don't know how you, as a board, differentiate based off one group of people's families and children versus another. And to that point, I heard some, I had somebody on the phone yesterday that was calling me about the rezoning, but said that they had seen the flags across Yelton and wanted to know what that was. I explained it to them, and they were more shocked by this. And they were like, they're not connecting onto our road, are they? Talking about Yelton. So, you're going to have concern from people there as well. And I just point that out. But if you wish for them to consider connecting to Yelton, since it is in the public road network, I have no problem with that. This is a sketch plat for zoning compliance.
Do we have any other questions from our board?
I would, I would have to ask the school system, and I'd-
No, they don't.
Yeah. Mr. Mayfield's here from the school system, and he, he's not- Yeah.
I, I live across 109 from it.
Yes.
I've got 10 people live on Yelton and Bates Road. None of the school bus go up Yelton Road.
Okay.
Any other questions from our board? Do we have a motion?
Can you?
Mr. Chairman, it meets sketch recommendation. I move with proof.
Second.
We have a motion from Mr. Jewell to approve with a second by Mr. Thompson, although in favor, vote aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
No.
With Mr. Woods' vote, no. Motion will carry. Let's see, a, motion will carry.
This time, we'll take a five-minute recess.
Second right there.
It got deferred to June 16th. They, they asked, the first time, they asked this time. They have a, they say they have a solution to the flooding at the crossroads right there, that they're going to bring to us. We'll certainly welcome that. But it was done on their position, not ours. Bad month. Thank you. Gets worse, it literally gets worse every month. What is that number, Eric, where that's actually worth it? No, we still have one, two, three, four things in front of us. Plus the last thing. They will take 30 minutes to play anyway. I hope we can. We actually have a lot of nations that says something. Whether it's something could be nothing. So you're going to have six weeks. Have a good day.
Ice cream business.
I've been a beauty for, I had a knee replacement. It's done good. I went to St. Thomas, it's done. And it, it's working pretty good now. I went Wednesday and he released me. About, about five weeks ago, six weeks ago. Yeah, it's, it's done real good. It's, it's replaced this, it replaced this shoulder, it replaced that. I just like this one having it. It'll be a biotic band.
No, no. I actually just thought it was 11 o'clock. I thought it was, I told you my counter. He's like, you need a staple this one. I'm like, already on this? Started, she's like, we started a deal like- Going to middle school that night, we just morning with ice cream. My brother called me, he's like, hey, you know how many carbs in this ice cream? Said somebody's getting it. I bet the nurse has got to figure out how much this one is. And I really don't-
We're not required to have a nutritional level that we produce so, so beautiful.
No, no. Tell them, just don't eat it if they're, I mean, I hate it.
I was going to try to, try to buy it more, but he eats too much. I can't afford to feed him. You got a bunch of turkey hunters out there?
My niece started hunting, so she's, she's the turkey hunter.
I told you my brother, you remember him?
Yeah. Where's he living at?
He lives at Franklin. He bought, he bought in a, also half-dollar subdivision. He's got, he's been there for 12 years. He bought a farm there. He's a big old farmer. He said he was going to build him a house, but he said he's two years old now. I said, you ain't going to be able to take care of no 40-year-old farm or something like that. And he bought him a, he's a new tractor, and I want to go give him. Home's down on the farm. Well, his kids live way away from here. One of them lives up here. I don't, I don't know where it is, 40, 50, 60, 70, 80, 90, 100, 110, 120, 130, 140, 150, 160, 170, 180.
He live in a big shop house, like a big-
He's, he's in there. So he goes around and takes businesses out, and watches. You know, he's like, I need to get, he's just doing that, he's more available. He's got daughters. He lives down in Chattanooga. Another daughter's live in Alabama somewhere down there. We don't get together like we used to. He, he tried to sell his trucking business. He can't get nobody, find nobody done that money to buy it. He's got a 67 truck. He's got about 30 or 40, 70, he's driving it.
That's why nobody wants to buy it. Because they won't be able to get the driver.
You know, he says, he's got, he says he has, he's got a, he's got a, he's got a gun.
They do a good, they're all in the stairwell, go to the right place.
I told you about him, he was doing this, didn't he?
Oh, yeah, he did.
I probably wouldn't hide all, 30, 40, 50, shotgun. He killed a lot of people. Hurricane got excited. And unless, unless a gun had set up, that's true. I never was going to say that. I don't want to say that. I was in the army. Something like that, we have to roll out and we have to, maybe I don't, if I got to do that. Back 12 years ago, like, like I said, Riley, about, putting off turkeys in there. They all were pretty well just scared now. I saw him a week. They started running the cooker. It's all on that, you know, different thing.
Absolutely, and not last year. Try to stay in front of it. It's got to be like-
I ain't crazy about a wooden turkey.
Desperate not to have- Our children, so to speak. And I understand that, and I understand you-
He goes around going with a helmet.
No, no, you know what I'm saying, though. It's just, it's just a complete shocking system, changing the way of life. We have the 4th of July picnic for the, everybody comes. This is 21 hours. We have everything on the road. It's going to change everything.
David Cook's, they put a thing down on the floor here right now. And he called him, he was in the little car.
Was it 200 something bucks?
There you will. There you do.
That one on Cook's Road? Cook's Road is 144 dollars. And I had, they had a problem anyways, right here.
I was going from house to, to watch that he come by that window.
And this one is going to be third. Then we get to them real quick. Okay, you got it, Richard.
Yeah, I'm ready.
Got evening game at 2:00 in Gallatin.
Martin. He doesn't hang out anymore, you do.
See, I mean, that's their reported plan. Different.
At this time, we'll call the meeting back to order, please.
Thank you, guys. Have a good day.
Tom, next on our agenda is a sketch plat for Willow Landings.
Yes, sir. And that, that submittal has been withdrawn by the applicant at this time.
No action required on our part.
No action required on your part.
Thank you.
The, the next item on the agenda is the sketch plat for Southwest Cook Road subdivision, consisting of 144 lots on Southwest Cook Road. The applicant has requested a one-month deferral. Before I, you take action, I do want to elaborate a little bit on this one. This falls within Mount Juliet's planning region. Apparently, they applied to be annexed and proposed a development in the city of Mount Juliet and were denied. They've come back making use of their existing zoning in the county, which is R1. The zoning entitlement that the county currently has, notwithstanding any other actions that may occur today and with the county commission, is, would allow this 144 lots they're proposing roughly by zoning entitlement. However, Mount Juliet has passed a subdivision regulation that, that I'm not, I'm not going to, I can't state it identically to what, the way they've written it, but my understanding is unless you are on Mount Juliet Public Sewer, as- unless you are on Mount Juliet Public Sewer, as described, Mount Juliet Public Sewer, um, any, they will not approve any subdivision that's less than an acre, uh, per lot. Uh, so with that, while it may be zoning compliant under county zoning, once it forwards to their preliminary plat process at the city, it would likely get denied at this, at this number.
Okay. So they have asked for a deferral to the...
And they've asked for defer, for defer for a month.
May nineteenth meeting?
Yeah.
Okay. Okay, do we have a motion?
Second.
I, I didn't make a motion.
I'll make a motion.
Okay. We have a motion from Ms. Weathers.
Go down second.
To defer to the May nineteenth meeting. We have a second by Mr. Woods, how about that? All those in favor, vote aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion. Uh, we've got the re-subdivision of the Connie Colbert property, lots six and seven.
Um, yes, sir, and this one, unfortunately, while it's only four lots, I've, I've had quite a bit of conversation the past few days about this one. Um, there is a, Ms. Connie Colbert, who, um, originally sold the property at auction. She had it split up by a surveyor and, uh, and soil scientist, found soils and everything. Um, and seemingly was indicated that this is where they could find soils, and this was as much as they could get. And so, in this case, lots, um, six and seven, as currently recorded in the register of deeds office, are what's being proposed to be re-further subdivided into two additional lots. Um, Ms. Colbert has, has reached out to me, asking questions along the lines of why could, if, if I didn't, she initially didn't want the lots to be as deep as they were, that she had to sell off, but she was told that, at the time, that they had to be that deep to, in order to accommodate soils. And she had wanted to be closer to the road, and in this case, this particular subdivision is creating two lots closer to the road out of these two existing long tracks, uh, making four lots where there were two, and they found soils. Um, now, my understanding is those soils have not been approved by the state, they are being evaluated. Um, so I give you, this, this plat meets our criterion from a planning commission perspective and a subdivision standard, uh, criterion, and we can, we're recommending approval, but I give you that information should you wanna take it under consideration on what action you take. She doesn't control the land any longer because it's been sold.
Right.
Um, but she does have some concerns, some concerns about how, how she got here.
I understand.
As a, as a previous landowner, uh, that was led to believe that would be about as much as could be there.
Okay.
I've got some paperwork to get up and take a look at it.
Well, tell us what you got, Mr. Wood.
Uh, I've got my four lots that I'm subdividing, and then I have the original auction. Uh, it was last June, uh, that the farm went for auction. I bought track six and seven at that auction. Um, uh, recorded, purchased, uh, I sent in the, the original plat from auction. I don't know how that went down with all of them, but I did find some extra soils. So I subdivided two five-acre tracks into a two-and-a-half acre and a, and a three acre, and it actually stimulated from the resolution of possibly changing A1, uh, square footage. So I hop, skipped, and jumped that thing forward, so I've been sitting on it for about a year. Um, not quite a year, and, uh, when I heard the resolution with the A1 change, I thought I might as well go ahead and get that pushed through. But I purchased it last June of 2022. Um, I did find some additional soils. You can see on the original plat from auction, all of the lot sizes were greater than five acres. They were ten acres, nine acres, twelve acres, five acres, five acres. So that may have been one reason why the auction, um, you know, went through with larger tracks. Sometimes, whenever it's over five point oh one, it is, uh, easier to streamline recording a plat. Uh, I don't know, I wasn't part of that.
Yeah, it was not, it, well, it was, they recorded a boundary survey, and let me differentiate there. Anything above five acres, for the most part, can be done by boundary survey, uh, and does not come through a review process, either by planning staff or this body. So he's here because he's got lots that are less than five acres, seeking a subdivision plat that voids and vacates tracks six and seven of that boundary survey.
Which is done often. Uh, you can create sat, track six A, six B, uh, six C, six D, six E. And if I buy twenty acres and I wanna subdivide, uh, four or five acre tracks, I've been the landowner for almost a year. If I prove that I've got, you know, power, water, and, and compliance, it's perfectly...
Yeah.
Legitimate. So, uh, I'm here to answer any questions, but showing the, uh, lots that I'm, uh, that has been in compliance, everything checks all the box. Now, there are a couple of critical lots, uh, maybe that was one reason it wasn't done as well. But the signature process with the soils and evaluation is, is the next process that I'll be taking care of, but that hasn't, doesn't have anything to do with the body here today.
Okay, thank you, sir.
And the, the person I'm speaking of wasn't able to be here today, 'cause she's, uh, she's a schoolteacher. Uh, so she did call me this morning, and I told her I would at least make you aware of her concerns. And, uh, in, in short, I think she's, and there's, really, she doesn't control the tracks any longer. Um, I can't answer why she was told that that was all the soils they could find, and now the state is evaluating additional soils. Like, I don't know how that, that's all under the purview of the state, Department of Environment Conservation.
And, and really, nothing for us to consider here. He, apparently, Mr. Fleming's the legal owner of it.
Yes, sir.
I mean, we can't go, can't retroactively do anything like that.
I just did, you know, because, I will be honest, she was very, uh, emotional about it, and I wanted to make sure that we...
Absolutely, absolutely, and that's fine.
That you are aware of what's going on.
Do we have anyone else here wishing to speak on this case today? We have any questions from our board? Do we have a motion?
Move with approval.
A motion to approve, do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second from Mr. Turner. Uh, all those in favor, vote aye.
Aye.
And those opposed? Motion carries. Uh, ready for the subdivision of the Carl Junkins property?
Yeah, just for the video, I will say that if those soils are still indeed under evaluation, that the plat, the new plat, won't be recorded until such time as the state's signed off on it.
Huh?
Okay, so Carl Junkins property is a three-lot subdivision on Shop Springs Road. Uh, map nine, references map ninety, parcel eighteen, and the plat meets requirements.
Move with approval.
Second. Let's hold on a minute, let's see if anybody else got anything else to say. Do we have anyone here?
I'm getting tired.
That's what that is.
I'm sorry.
You better get a second one. Uh, do we have anyone that we should speak on this case today?
Who seconded?
Well, we...
Jewel.
We don't know.
At this time, I'll call for a motion, Mr. Thompson.
Okay, I'll prove, I'll prove it too.
I'll, I'll say it.
We have a motion from Mr. Thompson to approve, a second by Mr. Jewel. All those in favor, vote aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries.
We have the following, uh, plats for affirmation. Uh, amendment of Spin Lake section, Spin Lake subdivision, section two, lot thirty-two, consisting of one lot at sixteen Haron Way, references map twelve M, parcel E. Uh, twelve M, group E, parcel three. Uh, subdivision of the Anthony Porter property, uh, consisting of one lot on Bloodworth Road, uh, references map ten, parcel nine. Consolidation plat of S, SCP Acquisitions LLC, consisting of one lot at eight fifteen Council Pike, references map one thirty-eight, parcel eighty-three. Uh, subdivision of the Sloan-Davenport property, lot one A, and Joe-Davenport property, lot four, consisting of two lots on Old Alexandria Road, references map one twenty-nine, parcel fifty-two point oh one and fifty-two point oh six. The re-subdivision of the Dennis and Priscilla Martin property, consisting of two lots at thirteen fifty-six and fourteen forty, Hamilton Chambers Road, and references map thirty-seven, parcel nineteen point oh three, and parcel nineteen point oh four. Subdivision of the Ann S. Jackson and Roy C. Griffin property, consisting of two lots on Franklin Road, and being referenced is map ninety-three, parcels thirty-six point zero one and thirty-six point zero seven. Subdivision of the Jonathan Mark Gray and Jessica Lassiter property, consisting of two lots on Creighton Lane, and being referenced is map thirteen, parcel five. Uh, an amendment to, and then finally, or no, an amendment to the Spin Lake section two subdivision, lot thirty-five, consisting of one lot at thirteen Haron Way, and being referenced is map twelve N, group E, parcel six. And then a subdivision of the Goins property, lot eight, uh, consisting of one lot at seven twenty-five Oregon Road, and being, uh, references map one seventy-seven, parcel sixteen point oh five.
Do we have anyone here wishing to speak on any of these cases today?
Uh, there, there is, on the last one, the soil sites are in question, and staff cannot affirm at this time.
So you don't wanna remove it, Tom?
Um, we can't affirm approval of it until we know a little bit more about that, the soils on that one.
Okay.
He's just letting you know it'll be on next month's agenda.
Oh, that's okay. Do we have anyone here wishing to speak on any of these cases today? Do we have any questions from our board? Do we have a motion?
So moved.
We have a motion to approve.
Second.
Second by Mr. Woods, all those in favor, vote aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? You let the record show, I have a stain, uh, the utility district that I serve on the board of is involved in one of these transactions, the Ann Jackson and Griffin property. Thank you. Okay, Tom, I think we're ready to circle back.
Okay, this was deferred from last month's agenda. It is, it is a, uh, a resolution amending lot size and allowable use criterion within the agricultural and residential zone districts within the Wilson County zoning ordinance. Um, I went over it, uh, both at last month's meeting, as well as, um, at the workshop that was held between yourselves and the Board of Zoning Appeals and, uh, and several county commissioners. Um, in short, the present proposal proposes to, uh, change the minimum lot size in the A1 zone district from forty thousand square feet, which, just for reference purposes, an acre is forty-three thousand five hundred and sixty square feet. So the minimum lot size right now is just shy of an acre, and this is proposing to change that minimum zone lot size for a single-family home to eighty thousand square feet. Um, in A1, um, the R1 district, uh, is currently, will allow, on public sewer, a twenty-five thousand square foot, a lot, whereas on septic, um, the septic either allows twenty-five or third, uh, uh, the, the septic allows a forty thousand square foot lot size most of the time, but if the state deems that the soils are good enough, they can get a thirty thousand square foot lot. But on public sewer, you can get, the current requirement allows a twenty-five thousand square foot lot. This is proposing to make the minimum lot size in R1 forty thousand square feet across the board. The R2 district, um, currently allows multifamily, and due to the way that is structured, they have to go through a Board of Zoning Appeals process that is really, um, confusing and doesn't make sense. So what I'm proposing is taking multifamily out of the R2 district and placing it in the R3 planned residential district. That does a couple of things. One, it gets us a master plan for development, but it also largely stipulates that in most places, they're gonna have to go for a rezoning if they want multifamily product in the county. The, uh, the other thing that is proposed is, right now, a single-family residence would be allowed on, uh, ten thousand square foot lots. Um, the proposal is to, to make R2 a twenty thousand square foot lot zone district. Um, they, there is another district, the A2 zone district, um, that currently allows two acre lots, and this is proposing to increase that minimum to four acres. Um, as I stated in the last meeting and at the workshop, I feel as though this is a measured response, given that we've had, I don't have the numbers in front of me like I did at the last meeting, but we've had roughly, uh, ten to twelve thousand lots, or, or single-family homes built countywide in the past four and a half fiscal years, roughly. Um, by statistics, roughly fifteen percent of those have fallen under your control as a planning commission, being in the unincorporated areas. The, the remainder, eighty-five percent, have been in, largely in Mount Juliet and Lebanon's, uh, city limits. So from that perspective, I feel that by trends, we're affecting between twelve and fifteen percent of all housing starts with this proposed criterion change. Uh, whereas something like an adequate facilities tax increase, which has also been considered, would affect a hundred percent of all growth in the county.
Okay.
So from that perspective, I feel like it's a measured response. I also feel like it's a measured response in light of what other counties in the region have done. Uh, Williamson County increasing in large part, as we understand it, their lot sizes to five acre tracks. I'm not in favor of going that extreme, uh, for a couple of reasons, but one of which is, um, above five acres, as we, as we talked about a little bit, or inferred a little bit earlier, we don't really have any control, that, that, that's not typically required to come before your, uh, your body for review. So keeping it at two acres or less, or four acres or less, in the case of A2, which there's none on the ground, keeps it, at least it's something that has to come before you for review.
Thank you. Uh, do we have anyone here wishing to speak on this today? Mr. Mayfield?
I'm here on behalf of Mr. Lutz, when he got called to Nashville, or he would have been here. I got some information I'll share with you, because it specifically relates. This was received last night. Asked him if he wanted to share it this morning, he said yes, so I hope I have enough copies. Currently, we are looking at a, we have a third-party transfarers who's developed that presentation. We are evaluating our school start times, which impacts our busing efficiency. You all know we've had some struggles getting students to school and home from, home from school with our current bus transportation. So that's where this originated. Part of this company's process is to look at everything, like, including our school zones. All right, and in doing so, they ask us for information, which I've spoken to Mr. Pershears and both, um, Lebanon City, Watertown, and, uh, Mount Juliet in regards to housing developments, because they want that information. So, and this is a preliminary ongoing process. I share that information with you, so you will see about the growth and how our schools are impacted. You know, currently, it gives you on their school capacity sizes, uh, school capacity availability percentage for each of our schools. And that is just based on where we are right now. Everybody knows we've been growing as a county in all aspects. School is no different. I, we're up almost eight hundred students from last year. We're gonna continue to grow. As a school district, we're going to try to accommodate that the best. We wanna be more efficient in how we use all of our resources, schools included. Of course, there's a lot of things that go into factor. You know, to some of those schools that have a lower percentage, like in the sixties, Tucker's Crossroads, for instance, well, it, it's, it's not very efficient to try to shift a whole bunch of kids over to the east side of the county when Mount Juliet, for instance, is so highly populated. We can look at those things, and that's one thing that we are doing. As you know, we have problems at West Elementary. It is over capacity. We've got ten portable classrooms that are being put in place right now. Um, we've got portable classrooms at Mount Juliet Middle School, but that's really to accommodate the tornado damage at West Wilson. The capacity numbers on there do reflect the capacity for the new West Wilson Middle, which is being built currently. It will open sometime next school year, most likely. Do you have any questions about schools, the growth, or how it impacts?
This is good information.
It is a very long report. I got the, the important parts out right now, and that's it, so...
Do you know what justifies a housing development, approved housing development? How many lots that might be?
I don't know that there's a lot specific requirement on it. It's just a proposed area that is, that has went through the planning commission, I believe, and it's approved. It could be...
Yeah.
Five, it could be a hundred.
Yeah, and the, the, the statistics I cited earlier were, were housing starts that people have actually paid an adequate facilities tax for. Um, that means it's not a replacement house, it's not something that, the house burned down, they're replacing it, or they're not taking one single wide trailer off and putting a new double wide on. They're not replacements, these are new housing starts, whether they're apartments, condos, or whatever. Those are the statistics I used. He's using actual, um, projected growth numbers based on subdivisions that have been approved. And I can tell you, at the county, we have a active subdivisions map, uh, that goes back to roughly two thousand and six. So there's some things, some subdivision developments on there that are near, if not a hundred percent complete, if not complete, but they still show up on the database or, or table ledger. Um, that being said, what we chose to do there was all major subdivisions, which by definition, our subdivision regulations, anything five lots or better. So if you've got a farmer that's split off a lot for his granddaughter or something, it would not be reflected in that data that likely got, uh, pushed up to the school system for evaluation.
And really, this was for educational planning purposes, not so much county commission planning purposes?
And, and...
But I thought I would share it with you.
And Mount Juliet and Lebanon have a similar, uh, mean... And Mount Juliet and Lebanon have a similar means of, of reflecting projected growth?
The 800 new kids you, you've took in this year, Mr. Mayfield, is that consistent over the last five-year period, roughly?
The COVID pandemic thing really screwed up all the numbers, because we had a lot of kids that chose to go to homeschool. So if you look at a five-year trend, I'm, I can't answer that specifically. What I can tell you is, I moved to Wilson County in 2005, went, started at Wilson Central as an assistant principal. The school has grown every year in population. With the exception, when we opened Green Hill, the number dropped. So the number was down, and, and that was a COVID year, so that we were in the 1,300 range. It's back to 16, about 1,600 right now. So it's across the board. We've been growing for years.
Wow. Lot of kids.
We have a lot of students.
Thank you very much. It's very good information, I appreciate it. Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak on this today? Okay, do we have any questions from our board? Okay, I'll call for a motion.
So I'll make a motion that we pass the resolution as presented.
We have a motion to approve. Do we have a second?
My second.
No, okay, I'm sorry, I wasn't looking. We have a motion to approve and a second by Mr. Noakes. All those in favor vote aye. If you would, please raise your right hand.
Mr. Chairman, can I make a copy?
Yes.
Is appropriate to do so?
You've got a motion and a second on the table. Are you asking for discussion?
So discussion.
Let me read, now get out of your way. The point of concern is a way to reduce rapid growth in Wilson County. The proposed plan involves the changing of zoning and subdivision regulations that direct where homes are constructed. The general impression this adjustment of building smaller homes on the smaller lots is that they will cluster around their cities. They will need water and sewer. County water and sewer will be difficult to provide, especially sewer. Septic system, step systems are not compatible with conventional systems cities use. More dependence for these services along with fire and law enforcement will fall to the cities. The cities will grow and grow. The wide spacious rural areas with larger lots, with larger homes, will be very beautiful, but the sewer system will be harder to develop because the density needed to justify it will decrease, and they will slowly go away due to the cost. Septic tanks, all of a sudden, become popular again. Step systems are serving this county well. They are well-managed and considered public sewer system by the state of Tennessee. Septic tanks may become an option even in the new high-density areas this adjustment of zoning and subdivision regulations create. Do we force them to go onto city sewer systems that are possibly close to capacity? How does this lower cost affect schools? Is the city going to build more schools, or is the county going to continue to educate schools? I can't see how for the life of me that this plan relieves schools. As the imbalance between these areas become more out of line, the cities and surrounding areas get larger, and the rural areas fall behind, as this plan will cause what happens to political representation under that situation to the county as a whole. There are long-term imbalances being created with this plan. These imbalances are hard to correct once you turn down that road. Growth should always be kept as equal as possible between the high-density areas and the rural areas. We know that's totally impossible, but we have got to try to manage some sort of reasonable proximity. As high-density and rural areas grow closer together in commonality, blending them together will be much easier. At some point, putting them together for the reasons of cost and efficiency will almost make it necessary to occur. I feel this plan of growth control further separates and costs us more. I strongly feel we need to look at a better way. Nobody's complaining that we've got to try to control growth. Messing with zoning regulations and subdivision regulations tend to separate the two major components of growth types, cities and rural areas. Present, our county government, the services it provides, and the overall quality of life is stronger and better than I have known it in my life. This plan attacks the quality of life of all of Wilson County. We do not need to regress. I submit, using a strong and aggressive use of the impact fee concept makes more sense. It's like a sales tax. It can be adjusted easily and quite readily. We as a county, including cities and rural areas, are already reaching urban qualities. We can't go back. Time will not allow it. I truly love this grand county. Its people countywide, schools, recreation, and the beautiful homes. It's a wonderful place to live. Let us be so careful how we tinker with our future. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir. Any further discussion? We do have a motion and a second on the table. All those in favor, if you would, please raise your right hand.
Anybody to restate the motion?
If you want to restate, Ms. Nichols?
To approve the reservation.
As proposed.
As presented.
As proposed. All those in favor, if you would, please raise your right hand. All those opposed, please raise your right hand. And we have 10 here. We have two, four, and, is that eight against?
That was seven.
Thank you. Thank you, Haskell. You're good at that.
You can't believe it, are you?
We're getting more than 10, all of them.
We got 10 votes. I mean, there's 10 people. All those in favor of the motion, please raise your right hand.
No, what's wrong with you?
That was Ms. Nichols and Mr. Noakes. All those opposed, please raise your right hand. That's you too, Mr. John. Okay. That motion fails eight to two.
We got it.
Eight to two is good.
I will call for another motion. Tom, I'm prepared to make a motion here, and I would like to do it on a individual zoning district each, if I could.
Yeah, I mean, anything you do is a recommendation.
I'm sorry?
Anything you do is a recommendation to the county commission.
And we'll vote on them independently?
That's, that's what you wish to do.
Okay. In the A2 District, I would propose that we, we follow your recommendation, recommendation on that.
Okay.
Which is for, let's see, 174,240 square feet for single-family and multifamily.
Right.
I would make that proposal, and I'll put that.
Or two-family, two-family.
Or two-family, I'm sorry.
No multifamily.
Two-family. And I'll put that in form of a motion. Do we have a second?
Sure.
Well, motion second by Mr. Ash. All those in favor vote aye.
Aye.
In the A1 District, I would propose that we leave the single-family homes at 40,000 square feet, and we raise the sewer, the lots with sewer to 30,000 square feet, which is in keeping with what they can be, can be, well, I, I jumped ahead of myself, Tom.
No, that's, that's not in A1, that's, that would be all.
I apologize, that's all. I would propose we keep the lots, lot size density the same in the A1 District.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor, please raise your right hand. Those opposed? Ms. Nichols voting no. That motion will carry. In the R1 District, I would propose that we keep the 40,000 square foot on septic in place, and we raise the sewer lot size to 30,000 square feet, which would be in keeping what they could already do on soils per the state regulation.
It stays the same.
It's in the form of a motion.
I want to make sure I understand that one. So the septic is 40,000 square feet, and then what are you raising to 30?
With sewer.
With sewer, they can do a 30,000 instead of 25.
Yes, keeping what's already available through the state.
And are you okay with me, because I, I had taken out the provision for 30,000 square foot on septic?
Yeah.
That would not be part of my motion.
So in other words, leave, leave it the way I had it proposed?
30,000?
No, no, no. My proposal is to keep 40,000 square foot for single families on septic.
Right.
Raise with sewer to 30,000.
Right.
To be in keeping with the 30,000 provision, which, that, does that go away just because I'm asking this?
Yeah, I was just trying to simplify our requirements on that.
That would just soil.
Yeah, the current, the current, there's a current provision that allows a 30,000 square foot lot in R1 if the soils are good enough, as it deemed evaluated by the state of Tennessee.
If you've got good soils, you can.
You could get 30,000 square foot. We have one subdivision that I'm, in my time here, that was able to do that.
There's not going to be many of those.
No, one significant subdivision.
But I would propose that we leave that stipulation as is.
Okay.
Per the state regulation.
So basically, on septic, basically leave it the way it is now, and on sewer, instead of going to 40,000 square feet, you'd go to 30.
Yes.
Okay.
And I'll put that in the form of a motion. Well, second by Mr. Ash. All those in favor vote aye.
Aye.
And those opposed?
No.
Mr. Jewell voted no.
I abstain.
And Ms. Nichols abstained, okay? In the R2 District, I would move that we leave the lots on septic at 40,000 as you proposed, Tom.
Okay.
And we would raise the sewer lot size to 20,000 square foot as you have proposed, and that we would raise the two-family square-footage barrier to 30,000 square foot as you have proposed.
Okay.
And I'll put that in the form of a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor vote aye.
Aye.
And those opposed?
No.
Mr. Jewell voted no. Motion carries.
And I want to clarify on that one. You're still okay with me moving multifamily as an allowable use out of R2?
I am, yes, sir.
Okay.
And I'll make that part of my motion.
Okay, so, so Jewell voted no, everybody else voted aye?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
And in the R3, Tom.
That, all I'm doing there is putting the multifamily, well, it was already there, but that's going to be effectively where we would consider multifamily development from this point going forward, the R3.
So you, you've took a sec, a portion of that out of the R2 and moved it to R3?
It was already there as an allowable use, it's just basically limiting multifamily to that district, multifamily attached.
Okay. In R3, I would move that we accept your proposal, as stated, as written.
Second.
Well, motion is second to approve. All those in favor vote aye.
Aye.
And those opposed?
No.
Mr. Jewell voting no. Motion carries. Is that it, Tom? Is that all of it?
Hold on a second. Do you?
What was my vote in A1?
I've got you on a no for everything.
On A1?
Yes, sir.
Got you on no for all of it.
Yes.
Just to reiterate, the only change you're making based on what was presented is R1 on public sewer as opposed to being 40, you have it going to 30. Everything else is as presented, correct?
Now say that one more, I'm sorry, say that one more time.
The only amendment you're making is R1 on public sewer. Everything else was going forward as presented.
Well, the, on the R1, he's doing the, he's changing from 40 to 30 on public sewer, and he's also putting back in the 30,000 square foot criterion if your soils are good enough, which is existing now.
But in the R2?
If you go back one column.
Yeah, I thought you just removed that.
No, he's, he's, I had it removed, that's why I had it crossed out. He's saying it stands, so.
And we made two changes in R2, Christopher.
I've got those.
What two changes?
Which were as proposed, I believe, correct, Tom?
Yes, those were as proposed. They weren't amended from what he was saying.
I have a procedural question, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
So does this go forward in the resolution altogether with our recommendation, or does it go separately?
I will, I will, it depends on what the county commission wants to do. I will take your recommendation to the county commission. We will modify this to show your proposed recommendation.
So just for the record, I have a set over there. They could easily, if they wanted to amend this on the floor, and put this back in.
Yes. Yes, sir.
Yes, and if they, if they wished, I could give them copies of the original resolution if, if they wished, but that, that's up to them.
And just, just for clarity, nothing else will change except for the changes that were proposed, correct?
No, sir.
I do see.
I probably should have discussed one matter during the R1 section, I was just trying to keep notes. The, with Mount Juliet's subdivision regulation change to an acre, the majority of Mount Juliet's planning region is currently, in the, that's outside their city limits, is currently zoned R1. If, if they maintain that 40,000 square foot limitation, unless people hook to Mount Juliet Public Sewer, there's going to be a conflict. I'll just leave it at that. I don't know if it'll be a conflict between us and they, the water authority and they, or all three of us. My hope is it would leave us out of the scenario, but I, I'm not a good judge of future actions.
Do we have anything else, sir?
No.
Did you want to say anything? Did you have something else you want to do, Mr. McCarley? Okay, okay. All right, we will stand adjourned.